Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tim and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Honey Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 13th Meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you with us this morning. It won't surprise you to know that we have a full agenda, so we'll be probably going into the maybe early afternoon, but we're going to try to get you all out of here as soon as possible. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. We have a treat this morning. We have Battalion Chief Mark Burnett with us. He's the Chaplain of the Columbus Fire Department, and he's agreed to come this morning and provide our invocation consistent with his faith tradition. Hey, Mark.
Hey, Mayor, how you doing? Good morning, everybody. Let's pray, if we can. Father, we love you so much this morning. We thank you, Lord, that we live in a blessed day today, and I just pray, Lord, for this council, for this meeting this morning, God, that you would just impart wisdom where wisdom is needed, God, that you would just be uplifted and glorified in everything that they do here today, and, Lord, that you would, Lord, move us one step closer to where we need to be as a city. Father, I pray for each member of this council, for our mayor, for our city leaders, for our public safety representatives, for all that have a hand in making this city what it is, which is great. I believe that, Lord. So, Lord, I pray a blessing on your people, a blessing on this day, a blessing on this meeting, and let your name be glorified and lifted high. And it's in the name of Jesus we pray, and let everyone say, "Amen."
Amen. Mark, thank you so much. Not only is Mark and his brethren, of course, heroes of the Fire and EMS Department, but Mark serves in so many different ways and served for many years on our pension board, and thank you, Mark, for all you do. Next, we have a big treat. We've got some folks here from Dorothy Hyde Elementary School, and so we're going to ask them to come forward. They're going to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if you guys would come forward here, stand in front of the big desk. Tiaja's going to get you a microphone, and as they assemble, if the rest of you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent.[223.12][223.12](Applause) Don't go anywhere. We want you to say your name, and tell us how old you are. Yes, ma'am, why don't you start here?
Sarah Ventura, and I'm 11 years old.
Kamali Buckner, and I'm 12.
Wait, now, y'all speak up a little bit. How old are you?
Kamali Buckner, and my name is, I mean, I am 10.
Okay.
My name is Jeffrey Mees, and I'm 9.
My name is Ashlyn Valeri, and I am 10.
My name is Isaiah Flynn, and I am 10.
My name is Jakai Evans, and I'm 9.
My name is Jamar Hart, and I am 11.
My name is Tayna Washington, too.
My name is Ismael Twatutu, and I am 11.
My name is Aleah Hayward, and I'm 10.
My name is Dakota Castet, and I'm 10.
My name is India Mourne, and I'm 11.
My name is Ashley Nunes, and I'm 11.
My name is Naraya Wilson, and I'm 10.
My name is Takeya Cody, and I'm 11.
My name is Navea James, and I'm 9.
My name is Zakarian Miles, and I'm 10.
My name is Adriana Brown Lane, I'm 10.
My name is Jamarcus Luke, and I am 10.
My name is Akila Merchant, and I am 11.
My name is Ethna Vicente, and I'm 11 years old.
My name is Deshawn Mizam, I'm 9 years old.
All right, did we get everyone? And you've got some folks here with you, too. Y'all wave. Thank you all so much for bringing the students. Thank you all. Great, great job.[319.63][319.63](Applause) We appreciate all you do. Hope you'll come back and help us again real soon. All right? Have a great day in school. At this time, we want to call forward the family of Tamika Johnson. This is something we normally do in our proclamation session, but Ms. Johnson's family was unable to be with us in the evenings, and they really wanted to come and receive this resolution, if you would, over here to the podium. And so, we have the Mayor Pro Tim is going to read a resolution into the record here.
Whereas Ms. Tamika J. Johnson, former employee with crime victim witness assistance, passed away on January 22nd, 2018, whereas Ms. Johnson was a victim advocate from January 9, 2017 to January 21st, 2018. Now, therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby convey to the family of Ms. Tamika J. Johnson our sincere condolences and deepest sympathy. Ms. Johnson was an outstanding employee with crime victim witness assistance, and she will be missed by all who knew her. Now move for its adoption.
Okay, we got a second. We're going to go ahead and take a vote, and then we'll formalize it later on, but we want to get this to you. We know you all have to get back to work and all of that. So, all those in favor, please state "aye." Great. And we want to recognize you all. If you would, introduce yourselves. Yes?
I'm Amanda Mia Chaney. I'm 19 years old, and I'm her oldest daughter.
Oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Shannon Gardman. I work for Victim Witness, and Tamika was not only an employee, but a dear friend to me.
Wow.
I'm Nicole Smith, and I also work with the Victim Witness Department, and Tamika will truly be missed by the entire department. She did an outstanding job and raised a beautiful daughter.[452.03][452.03](Laughter)
Sarah Hyde, also with the Victim Witness, and she was really great.
Yeah. You know, we're all family. It's a 3,000-person family here, but to have someone who worked in with our victims takes tremendous patience, tremendous heart, and so we're very, very proud of your mom, and we're going to miss her very, very much. So, thank you for being here. We're so glad you took a moment so you could see what your mom meant to us and a lot of other people she helped during her career here. We want to give you and your mom's legacy another round of applause, and then ask you to come around, because we'd like to shake your hand. All right. Got so many wonderful people working for this city, I tell you. It's hard to lose one. Next, we have a presentation.[525.16][525.16](Coughs) Excuse me. We have a land bank authority here in Columbus, Georgia. Many of you may not fully appreciate what that means, but it's a tool to be used to help us deal with blighted, abandoned properties, to help with what we call heir properties, properties that have been left by folks that maybe their heirs, their descendants weren't that, weren't readily able to be identified because they had long ago left this area. And so, a lot of cities struggle with these vacant and abandoned properties, particularly in blighted areas. So, anyway, we have a land bank authority, and we wanted to, we were, had the benefit to have someone come down and assess where we are, how we might be able to do things a little better. And so, I want to call forward Laura Johnson, who's our Director of Community Reinvestment, to tell us a little bit about this process, how it came about, and then to introduce our special guest.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A few, well, maybe about a year ago, we started looking into how we could revamp our land bank and use it to benefit the community as far as eliminating some of the blight and some of the tax delinquent properties that we have throughout the community. So, last year, during the budget process, council approved for us to allow the land bank to use approximately $1 million that we had as NSP program income to start this revamping process. As part of the process, we were introduced to Sarah Touring. She is with the Center for Community Progress, which is a nationwide organization that works with communities to help them figure out how to utilize their land bank to the best of the, at the best of their ability. So, a few months ago, Sarah came and visited us and actually met with some stakeholders, met with the Land Bank Authority, and she went back and analyzed everything that she learned on that day and prepared a memo, which I believe all of you received in your packet this morning or by email. And now, she's here today to kind of walk through that memo a little bit and try to talk to y'all a little bit about how we can get the land bank up to its full capacity and be able to use it to eliminate the blight in our community. So, I want to welcome Sarah Touring with Center for Community Progress.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, welcome to Columbus.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of council. I'm delighted to be here. Thank you, Laura, for the invitation. As Laura shared, I serve as General Counsel to the Center for Community Progress, which is a national nonprofit that serves communities like yours struggling with vacancy, abandonment, neighborhood stabilization. You are in good company. I have the privilege of working all over the country doing this work. However, I'm based in Atlanta, along with one of our co-founders, an Emory Law School professor named Frank Alexander, and it's a delight to be working here in my home state of Georgia. So, thank you for the invitation. As Laura mentioned, hold on one second, let me get my screen going here. My primary task here was to take a look at the CLBA, the Columbus Land Bank Authority, which has actually been on the books here in Columbus since 1992. And then, in about 2014, 2015, Columbus was actually one of the first communities to update its land bank powers with new powers authorized by the 2012 Georgia Land Bank Act, which Frank Alexander and myself actually drafted and was passed in the Georgia Legislature just a few years ago. So, my task was to take a look at the land bank, meet with the board, a number of other stakeholders, to provide ongoing TA to the land bank as it utilizes some of this NSP income and gets jump-started, do that initial site visit, provide the memo, which is in front of you, present my findings today, and continue to provide TA as we move forward. Before I jump in, I just wanted to highlight for you, the land bank, like I said, has been around since 1991, and in my meetings, I heard a few reasons why the land bank hasn't done more, right? It's operated in sort of a limited fashion over the last 30 years. I heard limited funding, which, again, you're not alone, the lack of dedicated leadership, and ongoing struggles to fully leverage the unique powers that a land bank has to operate in concert with the tax foreclosure process. And I'm so excited for you today because one of those barriers is eliminated. There's some funding available to the land bank, thanks to this council's decision, over the next few years, and that's a huge asset. My primary recommendation that you'll hear today is to hire a leader. Folk around the country ask me all the time, "What makes a land bank successful?" And while money and resources are certainly important, I would take good leadership any day. Those two things, I think, are both critical. So, quickly, I want to give you a quick overview of land banking from a national perspective, identify some of the priorities I heard from stakeholders here for the Columbus Land Bank, offer quickly some recommendations for the next three years for the Columbus Land Bank, and then, of course, turn it over for questions. Wanted to ground us for just a moment in the problem that land banks are designed to solve. Does this look familiar? There may be one or two properties like this in Columbus, Muskogee. When I see a property like this, I'm worried about a number of things. Maybe you are, too. I'm concerned about crime, about fire. I'm concerned about human costs, both to our first responders, to folk who might walk to school and passing properties like this. Good things don't tend to happen in vacant and abandoned properties over time. Conditions inside the property can get worse over time. I'm concerned about property values for the neighbors, for the folks who live next door. I point this out just to make the suggestion that vacant, abandoned, problem properties like this have a cost if nothing is done. They cost the taxpayer and cost the community. And this kind of stuff is what land banks at their best are designed to address. Quick overview, a land bank is simply a public entity authorized typically under state-enabling legislation to acquire, maintain, and dispose of vacant, abandoned, problem properties. There's at least 170 land banks nationwide. Community Progress has been involved with the creation of most of those land banks over the last 10 years. 70% of them have been established since '08, but here in Georgia, we have a long history of land banking. Last count, I believe, we're at 15 Georgia land banks. There's a statewide association, and Georgia's really one of the leading states in the country for land banking activity. Just quickly, land banks in their activities are an alternative to simply letting that property I just showed you sit there. It's a way to invest in the community, to take control of those kinds of properties that are dead to the market. Often, those properties have taxes, back delinquent taxes, that are more than the fair market value of the property itself. So, if I've got 15K in back taxes, a property that's worth five, that's a property that's dead to the market, and it calls out for some intervention. Generally speaking, land banks need to be supported financially at the scale of the problem that they're designed to solve. Again, if we're primarily addressing properties low value, high back taxes, causing lots of cost to the community, generally, those entities are going to need support from the community for operations. In my meetings with stakeholders here in late November, I heard a number of priorities for the Columbus Land Bank, again, which has been operating on sort of an ad hoc basis over the last several years, dedicated board, which is a real asset, but without dedicated staff. So, they've handled a handful of properties on an ad hoc basis. I heard the need to focus and target land bank activity on vacant, abandoned, tax-delinquent properties. No surprise, the mayor also mentioned heirs property, which is a struggle both here and throughout the South. I heard a need to expand the land bank's activities to better respond to the scale. We've got a number of properties we want to address here in Columbus, and we want the land bank to be empowered to do more than one, two, three properties. I heard a tremendous openness and flexibility to designing the priorities of the land bank going forward, and real excitement about the opportunity that these NSP funds present. Primary recommendations over the next three years. One, hire an executive director for the Columbus Land Bank Authority. We need to have good leadership to focus time, attention, and resources on the issue, and to really build out the Columbus Land Bank Authority, get it moving. I've suggested that that ED develop a three-year action plan, informed by meetings with stakeholders, data gathering. What precisely is this land bank going to do? Where will it focus its activities? And that action plan would then, of course, be presented, and would need to be reviewed and adopted by the land bank board. I've suggested building a ladder of engagement with the Tax Commissioner's Office. I've mentioned that Georgia law authorizes some really unique powers for land banks to intersect with the delinquent tax enforcement process. There's simple items, from simple to much more complex activities. Those activities need to be learned, institutionalized within the land bank and the Tax Commissioner's Office, and present a real opportunity. Finally, I'm suggesting doing some quick wins. We don't want to have paralysis by analysis. So, I'm suggesting if this council decides to hire indeed a land bank director, we need some stuff on the books right away, simple, low-cost items to celebrate the land bank, to build its reputation, and take action. I would suggest that the CLBA executive director is critical. That's really my most important recommendation. The ED should have the requisite expertise. Well, what is that? Primarily, real estate expertise. Certainly, public administration is important, local government expertise. This person could transition to permanent when appropriate. Physically positioned for success, it may be that it makes sense for the land bank director to actually be housed in the Community Reinvestment Office. To work with other local government staff, take advantage of the expertise there, avoid reinventing wheels. Again, over time, my suggestion is that the local government should provide institutional support for staffing. This is a community struggle with the vacant, abandoned, dilapidated properties, and ongoing support will be needed. Three-year action plan, if we've got some good resources, if we have good leadership in place, what precisely is the mission and the vision of the Columbus Land Bank Authority? Even if we had unlimited resources, which we certainly do not, how should the land bank focus the resources that it has? Which neighborhoods? Which priority properties? What data do we have that should inform how the land bank makes choices, says yes to some projects and no to others? To develop this action plan, very simply, the director should meet with a wide range of stakeholders inside and outside government, identify areas of consensus, disagreement, work with the city to prioritize data collection. Do we have a target number of vacant properties throughout the city? Of those vacant and abandoned properties, do we know how many are tax-delinquent? Do we know how many have serious code violations or other health violations? That may be a way to narrow and focus the energy of the Columbus Land Bank moving forward. The action plan should also be an action plan. What is the land bank going to do year one, year two, year three of this jump-started activity? I have offered simply suggestions. They may need to be altered certainly by the leadership. Maybe it's five properties in year one, 10 in year two, 20 to 30 in year three, and you can see how this can build and grow. Deepen the Columbus Land Bank's tax, delinquent tax enforcement experience and knowledge. Again, as I've mentioned, there are a range of ways that land banks can interact with the delinquent tax enforcement process, and I have suggested building a ladder of engagement, starting simple, getting more complex, and working very closely with Commissioner Huff and her staff. Briefly, some of the powers identify the Columbus Land Bank property itself is held tax-exempt. That's authorized under state law. Columbus is one of the only communities in Georgia that has authorized a tax recapture program, which means that when the Columbus Land Bank Authority acquires a property that is tax-delinquent, non-productive, and gets it back into responsible hands, productive use, for five years, 75% of the newly generated taxes can go back to the land bank to support land bank operations. Tax extinguishment. Georgia land banks are authorized to take in donated property that is tax-delinquent and extinguish the back taxes, and then get those properties back into productive use. This is the model that the Valdosta Land Bank has used almost exclusively, whereby, if I own a property in Columbus, maybe I live out in Florida or California, I've long ago abandoned that property, taxes continue to accrue at its vacant, causing problems in the community, I can donate that property to the land bank, and the land bank is authorized to extinguish those back taxes and then get the property back into productive use. This is a good solution for those properties where you've got way more taxes owed than the value of the property itself. Moving on to acquiring properties at tax sales, all different kinds of sales, that's obviously a more complex endeavor, but authorized under Georgia law and has been utilized here in Columbus in limited fashion. In addition to hiring leadership, to developing that action plan, and building a ladder of engagement with the Tax Commissioner's Office, I always want to suggest the quick wins. Really important for your land bank leadership to get up and running, and I think there's some real simple things that could be done, including joining the Georgia Association of Land Bank Authorities, which meets relatively regularly around the state. Allison Goldie from the Macon Land Bank is the Vice President. Chris Norman from the Atlanta Land Bank is the President. Lots of resources there, and other teammates from around the state who are there, ready and willing to help. Update the Columbus Land Bank website. Put the board members' names and bios up on the website. Utilize social media. Maybe there's a land bank project over the last few years that's been a real success. What's a property that the land bank has disposed of, put into responsible hands, and good things are happening? Capture those stories and tell them to build support, to help educate the community about what the heck is a land bank? What's it supposed to be doing? And how can it help my community? This photo here, or a little drawing, "Abandoned But Not Forgotten." This is something I've seen a number of Pennsylvania land banks do, where the moment property comes into the land bank inventory, a simple, low-cost sign is put up, "Abandoned But Not Forgotten." It's been incredible how helpful that is, usually with contact information for the land bank also placed on the sign. That's really helpful for folks in the community to say, "Wait a second. What's happening with this property that I've been calling my council member about for years? Oh, gosh, something's being done, and here's a phone number I can call if I have questions." Other simple things, hold land bank board meetings around the city. As the board develops and grows and decides where and when to focus the resources of the Columbus Land Bank Authority, I've noted a number of land banks around the country that intentionally have their board meetings in community spaces in the neighborhoods that they're serving. Makes it easier for the community to get to the land bank, to the land bank leadership, and to ask questions and learn more. The land bank can certainly help with surplus local government property. That's another key tool that Georgia land banks have used. So, under Georgia law, the local government can transfer surplus local government-owned property to the land bank. The land bank, then, in conjunction with its priorities and policies, which are transparent and are publicly available, can list the property and sell it, get it into responsible Wanted just to offer one hypothetical example. Let's say the local government owned an old firehouse that's been shut down. That's a common story that I hear around the country, or oftentimes, old schools, that's another one. Hypothetically, Columbus could transfer that kind of surplus property to the land bank. Land bank can then list the property, sell it to a responsible owner. Now, we suddenly have a property that's returned to the tax rolls, that has not been generating taxes for however many years, is in responsible hands. Sometimes, not always, those kinds of surplus properties, when they are sold, will generate some revenue that the land bank can then use to invest in that first property that I showed you, that's probably going to need a few more dollars than it's worth to fix the problem. So, I will stop there and just close with saying, "Thank you so much for the invitation to be here and be part of the conversation that's happening in Columbus." I can sense, both from my visits and conversation with Laura and her amazing team, there's a lot of energy around this issue, neighborhood stabilization, in Columbus. I'm really excited for you with dedicated funding for the Columbus Land Bank, with the possibility of hiring leadership, building deeper engagement with the Tax Commissioner's Office. I'm really hopeful for the future of the Columbus Land Bank Authority. Any questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. What a great presentation. We do have a few folks. We've got Counselor Huff with some discussion. Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the presentation, being here, and to our staff, because this is a big issue in our community. I have a question, though. How has other communities handle abandoned property or property that's not abandoned, but the owner is out of town? It's not very responsive, does not return calls, letters, anything. And you have this property just, and I have one in my district I'm dealing with right now, and this property is just sitting there. And to show you to the one I found, and actually, it's not in my district, but it was brought, you know, to my attention, they boarded it up, but then, the property owner didn't pay the people that boarded it. So, you know what they did? They came and took the boards out, and the property is there. But we can't get a hold of the property owner. There's people interested in buying the property, but we're like deadlock. We have nowhere, you know, where to go. Here's another example. We had one that was in my district. It was in Oakland Park, and it took us, I would say, maybe... one that was in my district. It was in Oakland Park, and it took us, I would say, maybe 10 years, eight years to finally, you know, get that property to be resold. And the person intentionally, he said it too, intentionally, he'll pay the fines, but he wouldn't do anything, you know? And those are situations that we run into, where our hands are tied, and the public feels that we're not doing anything about it, but our hands are tied. You know, there's nothing we can do. And I'm just curious to see if, in your organization, have you all run into that situation, and what were you able to do? I like your presentation. I'm all in support of it. Anything that can help us get the blight out of our community. But this is the, I think this is the biggest problem that we face here. It's absentee landlords, I would call that.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman. I'm reminded if y'all ever heard of whack-a-mole, which is something I hear about all over the country. What you're describing is something that communities all over are struggling with. A couple of thoughts, and I want to be very clear that I'm referring to solutions for vacant and abandoned property. I think it's important to point out, regardless of whether you have an absentee or irresponsible owner, when there are folks living in a property, sometimes the strategies need to be very different. When it comes to vacant and abandoned property, housing and building code enforcement is step number one. In community progress, we talk about fix it up, pay it up, or give it up. So, owner, you're going to need to fix up your property in accordance with our local ordinances. If you don't want to fix it up, the local government, the taxpayer will fix it up, but then you're going to have to pay it up through fines and otherwise. If you're not willing to pay it up, then you're going to have to give it up. And I think that that last step is, is a step that communities need to struggle with, at which point is the, the taxpayer, the local government going to have that confrontation, either through the delinquent tax enforcement process. If the property you're describing is tax delinquent, then of course, there's a tax enforcement process that can result in the transfer of the property to responsible ownership. There are also Georgia laws that authorize some very powerful code enforcement activities, particularly on properties that are in such bad shape, they need to be demoed. And I'd be happy to follow up and share with you that, those statutes. But for properties vacant, abandoned, that need to be demoed, that have serious problems, the local government can do the demo, attach the demo lien, excuse me, to the property.
Can we do that now?
And then collect it along with the taxes. We find, in my experience, to, to get at some of those problem properties, civil or in rem enforcement works better than criminal, for all the reasons you may anticipate. LLC is hard to put them in jail. Doesn't really work, right? Sometimes the most vulnerable end up responding to criminal citations. So, so that would be a place I'd encourage you to look. And then, again, focusing back in on delinquent tax enforcement, doing judicial and rem enforcement, but struggling with, are we going to fix it up? If it's not going to be fixed up, are we going to make the owners pay it up? If they won't pay it up, are we going to force them to give it up?
When you, when you say force them to give them up, are you saying that the city can do a domain and take the property? Or is there any laws that do that? Like in the state, there's a law like for drug, drug trap, truck, drug, things that happen in a home. If the home gets in court and proven more than three times, then the state will take that property away. Is there anything like that that can be, or can be sent to our legislators to look? Because like I said, even the one building, one of the neighbors told me that the person pays the taxes. You know, people know how to work around the system, and that's the problem that we run into.
So, two thoughts, and I'd be happy to follow up more with your local council, too. There may be some tools. Some communities in Georgia are exploring code lien foreclosure. I'm not aware of a community yet that has done that, but this would hypothetically be if the, if the taxes are, are paid, an ability to possibly foreclose on code liens. Would want to explore not just demo liens, but also liens associated with the kinds of things, boarding, you know, grass, that sort of thing. I'd also want to take a look at, gosh, are our fines and costs fully loaded? Are we, are we charging local government 25 bucks to mow the grass? Is that our actual cost? Or, or do those fines need to be looked at to be sufficient? But code lien foreclosure is one area I would love to talk with your council about to consider.
Okay. Well, we'll get together, and Laura knows how to get in touch with me, because I'm very, very interested.
Beautiful, thank you.
Because I run into this quite often, and it's very frustrating when, you know, and, and people think we're not doing anything, but we are, because even though it's bad, people have rights, and it makes it so difficult. But if we can find a way to overcome that, I'm ready to put on my ten issues and go hell, because I know where there's a lot of property, that they play those games. It's a game to them. If not, they don't care about the community. They just want to irritate somebody, and that's it. But thank you.
All right. We have Councilor Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A couple of things. As you were making your presentation, one of the things that came to my mind is that I'm hoping that our land bank authority partners very closely with the school district, for example. In Muskogee County, we are two separate, independent agencies.
Yes.
But I do know that the school district has some school properties
Yes.
that probably could benefit from incorporation with the land bank authority. And I, I don't know if there's already something going on there or what, but knowing the people on our school board and, and the school district, the way they operate, they, I think, would be more than willing to join with us to take care of some of these properties. One of the things that, that I think in, gives us some problems is the name of this entity, the Land Bank Authority. What, what does that mean? What, you know, people don't know what that means. So, we need to do a, a really good job of educating the public, and social media may be the vehicle to do that. One of the questions that I had, too, was, one of the suggestions for low-cost action that you had here was to extinguish tax liens on donated property. Is that something that council can do, or is this something that, that the tax commissioner must do, or how, just briefly, if you, if you will, how does that piece of it work?
So, tax extinguishment on donated properties is a power that the land bank has under state law. I'm happy to provide the council, there's a manual, the Georgia Land Bank Resource Manual, that has very simple forms to accomplish this. It's a practice regularly used throughout Georgia. So, again, if I donate my tax delinquent property to the land bank, the land bank has the authority to extinguish those taxes and get it back into productive use.
And would you talk again about the 575 procedure?
So, under Georgia law, like a number of other states around the country, land banks are authorized, if they're operating under the 2012 Act, which Columbus is, when a land bank takes property in, and again, if you think of that picture of that first property, this is property that's not producing taxes, that's a drain on the local government and the community. Land bank can take that property in, and when the land bank disposes of it, gets it into productive use to a developer, to a nonprofit partner, otherwise, for five years, the land bank captures 75% of the newly generated tax revenue on that property, less school taxes, that can be used for land bank operations.
Okay.
Again, property wasn't producing taxes.
Yeah.
When the land bank gets it back on the tax rolls. It's just a way to have a little bit of, of operating revenue for the land bank based on its activities.
And I, I do think, and Mr. City Manager, I think, can attest to this, too, that we are very fortunate in Columbus that our various departments work together. I'm thinking inspections and codes and the Community Reinvestment Department, and, you know, I mean, the public works, and all along the way, those folks don't seem to have a territorial, you know, bent. They, they work together and do what needs to be done to make sure that our city is moving forward. So, I appreciate this, uh, presentation this morning. It's been very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And Sarah, I had a question that, that is, like a tad, is what you're talking about with the 575, that, that taxes kind of go into a fund?
Yes, just go back to the land bank for operations.
Okay. All right. Let's see, we've got Pops Barnes.
Sarah, Councilor Woodson answered my question. Laura, when we had our meeting previously, she answered, she said she was coming back. She answered all of our questions and more. So I just want to thank you. This gives us a lot of information to massage, a lot of options. Appreciate. Good seeing you again.
Thank you, Councilman. You, too.
Sarah, I have one final one. I hate to be overly candid, but you've come down here and given us some great things. I, I don't think in the seven years I've been here, I've ever seen council approve a new position, regardless of promises of efficiencies and improvement and action, all that stuff. It didn't pay for itself, or somehow increased revenue that it could, you know, be relatively direct in, in how it was being funded. That it increased the general fund, therefore, there was more money, therefore, the $50,000 or whatever it is could be paid for. So, if you've got anything to say about how this would create money to pay for this person, I, again, I may be surprised, but I've just never seen, never seen that happen, that I can recall.
So, thank you, Mayor, for your question. A couple of thoughts. One, if, if this council determines to hire a land bank director, I would suggest, as I have in the memo, at least give them a ramp to start off with. There are ways that land banks can gen-
Ramp.
A ramp.
Like really?
Before you ask your new executive director to raise staffing funds, give them a ramp to get started, to get the land bank going, to build its support in the community. There are ways that the land bank can generate some revenue, some of which I've described, selling certain properties that have value, the, the tax recapture program and otherwise. What I have seen around the country with excellent leadership, and I'm not aware of a, a place where you can start the leadership with no money, right? We've got to get somebody good on board. Good leaders are sometimes able to raise funds, build support for what they're doing, if it makes sense in the community. If I were your new ED, I would want to have some time to get going, get my action plan started, have a chance to prove myself and the worth of the land bank board. If success is shown, there may be other avenues in Columbus, in the state, at the federal government, to raise resources for funds. But again, the only other thing I would say is, as long as Columbus is struggling with vacant, abandoned, these kinds of dilapidated properties that are dead to the market, some resources from the community, if, if this is a priority for the community, to address them, then some resources, resources will need to be put forth to support the work.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, why don't you get with Laura and figure out what this person would cost? And, you know, I mean, otherwise, it's just a, a great fantastical idea. You know, council's going to need to look at what this means, benefits, and, and what an on-ramp is exactly. Yeah. So, anyway, if you guys would, maybe Laura has some thoughts on that. Thank you. All right. Sarah, thank you so much for coming down. Appreciate you. Hope you'll stay in touch with, with Laura, with us in general, and, and look forward to continuing our relationship. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to turn it over to the city manager. We have, it is you all that, I know you all sit at home in, in the evenings and watch our meetings on replay, and so you've seen that our meetings have gone extraordinarily long the last many weeks, till 11 o'clock at night and so forth. And so, we've had to just give up on the end of our agenda. So, we've got some transportation infrastructure issues that we really need to apprise council of. We're going to move this forward so we don't miss it again. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Good morning. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to come around, and as you've indicated, we've, we've been attempting to provide this transportation update since the second Tuesday in January, and we've continued to delay it. So, this is the long-awaited transportation update, and Deputy City Manager Hodge has lots of information, and we're here, here to answer your questions, but it is a transportation infrastructure update. And so, with that, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This will be a transportation infrastructure update, and I'm not going to go through all of the projects that we have ongoing at this time, but just to highlight a few of them. I'd also like to introduce, you've met Ryan Pruitt before. Ryan, if you'll stand up. He's actually our construction project manager, so he is intimately involved with all of the projects that are going on with roads, stormwater, building construction. He is our in-house project manager, and so if you have any specific questions about a project, if I'm not able to answer, Ryan definitely will be able to answer. He works under the direction of the engineering director, Donna Newman.
So, Pam, I think, you know, sometimes we forget to net the dots. It's been brought up several times at council. We needed a, a project manager. We need to hire a project manager. So, I think you need to explain, Brian's the guy. We got one.
We, we have an in-house project manager. He's a city employee. A lot of you remember, Harry Westcott, and after him was John Hutchinson. Ryan Pruitt took his position and has been with us several years now, managing our projects for us. Transportation funding. We have numerous funding sources that we utilize to fund transportation projects. There's an allocation out of the other local option sales tax, the paving fund, the T-SLOSS, the transportation special purpose local option sales tax, not only the projects themselves, but the discretionary funds that the city receives. We receive GDOT grants, and also annual allocation from GDOT called LMIG. Types of transportation projects include resurfacing, road improvements such as realignment, intersection improvements, like Forest Road was a widening project, bridges, streetscapes and beautification projects, Veterans Parkway, and we're now working on Fort Benning Streetscapes. We also look at alternative transportation sidewalks and our multipurpose trail network system, roundabouts like River Road, signal improvements. So, those are all the things that are funded through these funding sources that we include in transportation. One of the main questions that we get often is about resurfacing. We have 1,000 miles of roads throughout our community. Since 2005, we've expended $6.1 million on resurfacing, and we're working on a contract at this time for 1.4 million, a total of 7.5 million since FY15, just on resurfacing. The average cost of a mile is 160 to 240, and the cost varies depending on how many lanes and what types of improvements need to be made in order for that resurfacing to go in, whether there's manholes that need to be raised. So, the cost definitely varies. And we have done approximately 35 to 45 miles over this time period. So, we're averaging about 10 miles per year. Our goal has always been about 25 miles per year. Back when we had funding from the 1999 SLOSS, we were doing about 15 miles a year. So, we are doing less than what we were doing when we had an additional funding source with SLOSS. The current list that we're working on, that's 1.4 million, represents 58 sections of different roads. The current list is 169. We're funding for 58 of those. So, coming into FY19, we'll complete that list of 111 roads to finish out that resurfacing contract.
Okay. Pam, we've got, Councilor Thomas has a question.
Ms. Hodge, I just want to emphasize that when you say OLOS money, we are talking about the roads and infrastructure, 30% part of OLOS, and not the 70% that is designated for public safety.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
I just want that to be real clear upfront and throughout this discussion.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Huff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We had a nice meeting concerning the grading of the roads and everything. When's the next period that we will be regrading? Because I'm getting many calls now saying that since the grading was done, the roads in Bunker Hill, Halle Hills, Willis Plaza... the roads in Bonka Hill, Halle Hills, Whittles Plaza, a lot of Southside roads, and then leading back to parts of Midtown. They said the roads have deteriorated a lot in the last two years, and they want, they say that if it was a 40 rating, has it been four or five years?
I'm about to go through the criteria for resurfacing, and if I don't answer your question-
I mean, the last time we graded, that they went out, that you hired the company to grade the roads?
Four years ago, last time we did the resurf- I think we're four years ago. We do it every five years, so it's coming up in the next year or so.
In the next year?
We'll do a new evaluation.
Okay, okay. Go ahead. I'll wait. Thanks.
So this is a great lead-in. The resurfacing criteria, every five years, the pavement management system is updated. Each street is evaluated and scored between 0 and 100. The list is prepared from the pavement management system, scoring system, based on the available funds. So we're able to go into the system and say, you know, give us the lowest rated roads so that we can determine how much funding that we have available in order to attack that list. The in-house inspectors verify the condition of each street. So as you know, if we go out every five years, sometimes the conditions will change. So we'll, when we produce the list, we'll go out and re-verify all of those streets. The vendor that we have under contract also verifies the condition before the list is actually awarded to the contractor, and they provide us a cost estimate for that resurfacing. And again, the cost varies depending on the width of the street, and if there's tie-ins, patching, raising valves, any of those sorts of things. Currently, the list that we're working on is in the low 30s. So we do have a long list, but we are working on the worst streets first.
Yeah, we've got Counselor Huff again.
If a particular road was in the 40s or 50s at the time, and it probably is in the 30s now, we just have to wait until the next assessment?
That's correct. And if you can contact us, I know we went through quite a few streets that you had met with us on, and I think we went through those at council a few meetings ago. But if there are other streets that you want us to look at, if you'll just let me know, we'll evaluate those and see where they're at.
Okay, thanks.
On the transportation side, currently, we have 12 projects that are being managed locally, and that would be by Ryan Pruitt, three managed by GDOT, which includes the Talboton Road project. That completion date is for 2021.
Sorry, say that again.
Talboton Road project, the completion date is estimated at 2021. So we're about three years out on Talboton Road. Veterans Parkway North, they're expecting that completion in 2019. And for US 27, Custer Road Interchange, which is one of our TSPLOS projects, they're estimating that completion date to be this year. We have three active bridge projects that's being managed locally, and we have 20 additional projects that are under development. One of the most recent projects that's winding down now is the Dragonfly Trail, the Fall Line Trace Riverwalk connection. We're anticipating having a groundbreaking on this project next month. We're in the process of coordinating a date at this time. We're finishing up the landscaping on this project. But this goes all the way from where the Fall Line Trace ended, 10th Avenue at the Medical Center, all the way to the Riverwalk down 5th Avenue and 14th Street. The next project is the Follow Me Trail Bridge. We're anticipating this project will be completed in June of 2018. This is just a rendering of that bridge that will go over Victory Drive for the Follow Me Trail. These are pictures that were taken actually right before the presentation was originally supposed to be done back at the end of January. You can see a lot of activity down off of Victory Drive in order to put this bridge in place. They will bring this bridge and set it in in the middle of the night. If anyone's interested in watching that, it should be very interesting to watch them set that bridge in place.
And when is that, Pam?
We expect that-
April?
By the end of April. Victory Drive at, what's the crossroad for Victory Drive?
It's just west of Fort Benning Road, right next to Burger King.
Okay, west of Fort Benning Road, just next to the Burger King, where the Follow Me Trail will cross Victory Drive. For Forest Road Phase 1, the estimated completion on this project?
We've got Counselor Huff.
If you would, I'd like to request that you give us a call at least a week ahead to let me know the completion part of that, when the bridge will be dropped in.
Sure.
Yeah, I had called you, well emailed you. I have a particular constituent that walks the area consistently, and he was concerned about there not being activity. There's been nice weather. He doesn't see anything going on but maybe a couple of days a week. So I told him there's a reason for it. I just don't know what the reason is. So I was hoping you'd give him enough this morning to go on, to let him know that people are working and that the completion date will be sometime next month.
The completion date will actually be sometime in June. The actual bridge will be put in place sometime next month.
Okay, okay, okay. If you would, just shoot me an email so I can have him to come out and see it along with the rest of us.
Sure.
Thank you.
So on Forest Road Phase 1, this is obviously a widening project. We're anticipating the completion date sometime at the end of the year. So we've made a lot of progress on Forest Road Phase 1. This runs from Chautauqua into Woodger Farm.
We've got Mayor Protem.
Well, we've been in Charlotte Road. We need to have a big ribbon cutting, because that's been 30 years of cutting.
Riverwalk Bib Mill, this again is a TSPLOS project. This is a rendering. This project, we're estimating completion in August of 2018. There's been a lot of activity out at this site. These photographs give you an appreciation of the topography that they're dealing with out at Bib Mill's site in order to connect the Riverwalk by the Bib Mill. So you can see that the topography has been very challenging on this project. The River Road Roundabout is out for bid this month. This is the five intersections at River Road and Bradley Park. This is just the rendering of that roundabout. They have been out doing utility work and tree clearing in the area, major relocation of Georgia Power transmission poles. So you've seen a lot of activity out there. We expect to start construction by the end of the year. Wenton Road Streetscapes, this project is anticipated to be completed in August of 2018, which runs from 13th Street at Wenton Road down to Clubview Elementary School. A lot of activity on Wenton Road should be completed by the end of the summer. Other projects that are under construction is the Riverwalk at City Mills. We anticipate this project to be completed August 2018. The contractor is now on-site and has started to work on that connection. The Fort Benning Road Streetscapes from Shelby to the Gate, that was awarded in 2018, or it was awarded and expected to be completed in November of 2018. Fort Benning Road, Brennan Road Roundabout and Realignment, as well as the Fort Benning Road Streetscapes, which is, runs from Casita to Shelby. That will be out to bid this month. The Martin Luther King Junior Trail-
We've got Counselor Huff.
The streetscapes on Fort Benning Road, we're starting at the Fort Benning Gate to Shelby is the first piece?
Shelby to Fort Benning Gate is the first piece, and that's under construction at this time.
Okay, and then we'll go from Shelby-
To Casita.
To Casita.
And there will be a realignment of Brennan and Fort Benning Road-
Okay.
With the roundabout. That will be awarded as a second contract, and that's out for bid.
Okay. I looked at the bids, and it said something about an option one and two, and it was not supposed to be two options. It was just supposed to be bid out to be completed.
We're having them submit their proposals with two options so that we can get the best price.
That first option didn't speak of completing the streetscape, so did I misread it?
No, I think the first option is-
The first option just said the roundabout, along with infrastructure, sidewalks, and things of that nature.
Right.
Pipes and things.
And then the second option-
And then the second option said all of that plus the streetscape, bike, whatever we call it.
That's correct. We're asking them to price it two separate ways so we can evaluate the proposals and the best price.
That's what I'm asking. Why are we doing that when the best pricing should be the bid for just completing option two, or whatever that is?
Not necessarily.
So we're not going to complete it if the bid says do option one?
We are going to complete it, but we tried to submit the RFP in order to get the best pricing. And sometimes, when you break it into pieces, you get a better pricing than if you do it all as one project. So we're going to put it out, we've put it out for bid in two options just to be able to evaluate and analyze the pricing. There is no intention not to complete the entire project.
Okay, because the bid piece had some notation about two options, and it coming back to council due to possibly money issues or something, and?
Well, that will be what we discuss with council. Depending on what the bids come back, there might be additional funding that's required that will require council's approval. But there is no intention to not complete the entire project.
Because the scope of the project was to find the best bid to complete it out Fort Benning Gate to Shelby?
That's correct.
And then Shelby down?
That's correct.
And to try to time it with the opening of the school so we don't tear the roads up and things with the trucks and things that are involved in construction?
That's correct. That's the expectation. I don't believe we're going to have that completed by the time the school opens, but we're doing our best to get that done.
Yeah, I know. It'll take a little time. But we will complete it from Shelby down to-
To Casita.
Casita, okay.
With a roundabout there, and it will have the 12-foot wide, or 10, what is it, 10 or 12?
10-foot wide walk-in, bike-in path.
In fact, I think right in front of the construction work at Spencer, they've already done a portion of a 10-foot wide, so you can actually see an example of that now. But that 10-foot wide would be along that entire stretch of Fort Benning. And as she has said, we're going to align Brennan and Fort Benning, and then there's Casita, and then there's going to be the roundabout. And I think, I think we're all going to be pleased with it when it's done, and it is going to be done.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We have Counselor Woodson.
Pam.
I'm sorry. Turn on, Pam, to Counselor Woodson's mic. Thank you.
Pam, just to, when we do the bridge over Victory Drive, the Follow Me Trail Bridge, we had sent that to the honor board to rename that bridge after Mr. Owen Tixfield for everything he's done for 50 years in that area, and it was approved. So when we do the grand opening of it, is that when we're going to also designate it at the bridge? Or how does that work?
We can do that dedication at the time that we do the ribbon cutting, but we can work with you on that.
Okay, because I'd like for the family, you know, to be compact and let them know what's going on so that, to ensure that they're present at the time, and especially a lot of his supporters, concerned citizens of South Columbus, you know, people that have always been there with him. I think it's important that they get notified and they know that all his hard work, dedications, and sacrifice has been honored by this city.
Absolutely. We'll work that date with you.
Thank you.
So the MLK Junior Trail, that has started March 12th, so they started this week. The Double Churches parking lot is under construction. Anticipated completion for that parking lot is next month, in April. There are three bridges that are under construction at this time, Decatur, Boxwood, and Melrose. Transportation projects that have recently been completed include the Forest Road Bridges, the Follow Me Trail Phase 1, Double Churches, Veterans Parkway Intersection Improvements, and Whittlesey Road. There's multiple projects that are under development. I will not walk through each one of these individually, but you can see the list. These are projects that are under preliminary work, under design, evaluating concepts. These are projects that are both locally funded, either with GDOT funds or TSPLOS projects, transportation discretionary, TSPLOS discretionary funding. So multiple projects that are under development that you'll see coming forward in the next months. Also want to bring forward Donna Newman. We have some concepts that we've received from GDOT related to the traffic that we experience on Beaver Run and Flat Rock, all the way out to Technology Parkway. We want to share these renderings with you. These are just concepts and drafts that GDOT has been working with to create some roundabouts to improve the traffic flow out in that area. So I'm going to turn it over to Donna.
We've got Counselor Huff.
If you could, I'll call you. I'll try to figure out what it is I really want. But I need an update of, I don't think we talked much about Winterfield when I was there. Winterfield and that Casita Road, North Lumpkin Road, because Counselor Woodson and I share the North Lumpkin Road side coming across. We're just kind of running parallel a lot of places. And I'm sure the information will be good for both of us, both of us at this time. So Winterfield, and I'll email you the others, because I have, the way the district is cut now, it goes through Winterfield, and it's down to Brown Avenue, Andrews Road, going back to Midtown. So I think I'll try to package it into the different subdivisions and see if we can get it updated so I can meet with them.
And we do have two projects, the Brown Avenue, Casita Road, Andrews Road, as well as the intersection at 23rd Avenue and Lumpkin Road that's under design. Council's approved those projects in FY18 in this fiscal year, and so those are in process for those two locations, but we can definitely get together if there's additional-
Check and see if there's, if there are any resurfacing going on over in the Winterfield area.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to ask Donna to come forward and just talk about these two roundabouts, and then I'll finish off with some information.
One last thing, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
And I know somebody in the room will smile about this, but when the Brown Avenue Bridge was completed, Counselor Woodson has had the, she had the whole bridge before it was completed. And underneath the bridge is the Bragsmith Liberty, this Liberty Street area. There's an imaginary line on this side of the bridge. So if you go up across Brown Avenue Bridge there and look down, that whole side of that neighborhood now belongs to me. So Counselor Woodson is getting a lot of calls, and she's trying to refer people back to me. So if you would, check that piece of Liberty and Bragsmith that's on the, coming from the Casita Road side. Once you go under the bridge, that side over there. If you could find out what's going on for me, because we're receiving calls on, they feel neglected. So we just need to look at it, okay?
Related to road resurfacing?
Resurfacing, getting people back there on Saturdays to clean up, different things.
Okay.
You know, grass, just, you know, because we've done a good job of cutting the grass, which I think it's time again to make sure that bridge side stays clean because the snakes find their way down to the houses once the grass grows up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Switch over. Donna?
Donna.
Good morning. What I'm here to present to you this morning are concept drawings from Georgia DOT. We had asked them to actually look at this whole quarter, so they, they are actually starting at the River Bridge. And there's numerous projects and studies that they have ongoing that carries us all along this corridor, all the way out to, actually, the county line. And some of those improvements, they have already started initiating, and completing Jenkins Road is one of them. But this particular location is one that re-requested when we were doing a study of Flat Rock-Kitten Lake intersection. And as you may recall, that there has been a signal upgrade at that location to help with our traffic sequencing. But part of the issue at the Flat Rock Road intersection is the large number of trucks coming out of the Corporate Ridge Industrial Park and trying to make the turn at Flat Rock Road, and that creates a delay, and it limits the number of vehicles that can get to the intersection. So we had met with the different industries in the, in the park there and asked them about relocating the truck route to get them to come further east of that intersection, and their concern was trucks being able to cross the multi-lane road. And so initially, we were proposing a traffic signal, but DOT would not approve it because the traffic counts didn't warrant one. So we asked them to consider the installation of a roundabout. So this is what they have proposed at this point in time, is just a concept drawing. There'll be more analysis and more studies and more design work before it's actually constructed.
Councilor Thomas.
Ms. Hodge, give us a finger pointing of which one of those is Flat Rock Road? And I'm having a, I'm having the time trying to figure out exactly-
This is not Flat Rock Road. This would be forcing the trucks to come down to the intersection of where Macon Road ties in to Beaver Run.
So where?
That's the truck stop, the Chevron Station, where you see a lot of truck parking, where-
Okay, and, um, that's Macon going into 80?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what it, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, was trying to figure out where Flat Rock Road was and that, and I couldn't, couldn't find it.
On the north side, you'll see the North Precinct and the driver's license area.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
Uh, we have Councilor Baker.
Well, that's okay. I'll let her go ahead. Councilor Thomas, this was, this is to alleviate an issue back on Flat Rock Road. The solution happens to be further out, but the issue is on Flat Rock Road itself with all the trucks coming in out of the industrial park and using which at one time was really a residential street is all Flat Rock Road really is. But we've got trucks going through there, because they have to use that light at Macon and Flat Rock to get into the industrial park. So we're looping them around, and at the end of the day, when all this is done, they'll, hopefully, they'll come back and take Flat Rock Road off the truck route list.
Correct. We would adjust that.
Right, right. So, thank you. That's right. Flat Rock's not in this picture. Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
I apologize. I didn't do a good job of describing that location. The next location is one that the DOT was proposing, and this is at the intersection of Lynch, Technology Parkway, and Beaver Run or slash Macon Road. As you know, this is currently, has a signal in place, but there's still a safety concern due to the large number of accidents. And part of the issue is because of the way that the intersection is oriented, it creates potentially some blind spots to where oncoming traffic might not see a vehicle, or a car in a turn lane may not see an oncoming vehicle. And so there has been one fatality at this location and a large number of angle accidents where there were T-bones or, or vehicles where there were significant injuries. So this is something that the GDOT is offering as a potential solution, is to construct a roundabout at that location. The other thing that it would do would be to slow vehicles down, because as you know, cars are picking up speed as they're going out of the city and coming into the city. So this would actually slow vehicles down, and it would make the traffic flow smoother at that location as well. Along with that, it would be a good location for a gateway into the Technology Park that we have constructed out there. We don't really have, we don't have the other drawings, do we?
Right. I know if Councilor Allen was here-
We've got Councilor Huff.
Okay. Would we use the roundabout in coming out, going east, would you use, would you access the roundabout to get back to the DMV? It's now a U-turn, so you would just use the roundabout and go around and come back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are several other locations that GDOT is working on further east of the corridor. And one such they have already installed, and I don't have a picture, 'cause they've just recently fixed it or finished it, is at Jenkins Road and Beaver Run. They installed what's called an R-cut, and it's similar to what you see here, but because of the, if you have roads crossing in a, in a wide median, then multiple cars get in there, and it creates confusion. So they're trying to eliminate some of that. This is an example of one that they're proposing to put in at Winfield. And I know as part of the Gateway Walmart project, there was money set aside for a signal. But the issue is that, is that these subdivisions are built out, so the traffic on the side streets will never increase. And so therefore, it will never warrant a traffic signal. So this is something that the DOT is proposing as a safety measure. And so what this does is it does not allow the cars coming out of Winfield, if you will, to go into the median to make a left-hand turn. They will have to come out and make, and be forced to make a right, go down just a very short distance, and make a left-hand turn and come back down the corridor. This is one of three other locations, or two other locations that they're proposing. They're proposing one at the driveway entrance of the All Saints Presbyterian Church, as well as at the Woodbrier Beaver Run intersection. You'll see similar type. Part of, part of the project is at, depending on the spacing of the median cuts, they may go in and install a new median cut where only vehicles coming through making a left-hand turn to do a U-turn, if you will. So this is one of the things that they're proposing. There will be some public meetings about the other locations in April. And we'll work with Georgia DOT and invite the neighborhoods out there to get their input and answer any concerns that they may have.
All right. Any other questions for, for Deputy City Manager or Director of Engineering? Okay? Does not appear to be at this time.
I've got a couple more things I may want to mention. I didn't want to make light of some of the projects that we had talked about. Just wanted to notate, the Spiderweb Project is moving forward under design. We've done a lot of right-of-way acquisition in that location. We've done some demolition in that location. We're moving forward. We expect to have the design completed by the end of the year to begin construction in 2019. That's a huge project for us to go over the railroad in that location. That is definitely moving forward, as well as the Casita Road I-185 interchange. We're moving forward with that. We've been meeting with owners and stakeholders in the area in order to move that project forward. That project is under design, as well as the Buena Vista I-185 interchange, which they're proposing, the Diverging Diamond in that location. So those projects are TSPLOS projects, and moving forward, they're under design. So just wanted to notate those. Those are large projects for our area.
Let's see. We've got Councilor Huff.
Is our completion date on that project for the Spiderweb still the end of 2019?
Yeah, probably a two-year construction time period on that.
Okay.
So we'll be out to bid sometime in 2019, but that'll be a two-year construction project.
Okay. So we're looking?
Oh, the total project cost on that is 50 million for that entire project.
So we're looking sometime mid-'20 or end of '20, 2020?
Probably 2021.
2021, okay. Okay. They may have asked, and I just, you know, they put it on this, on the, on the, on the printouts that we have this banned. So within the ban, we have to get started, and then from that point, we complete out?
That's correct.
Okay. So for the public, for the public, by 2021, you will no longer be stopped by the train on Buena Vista Road. Thank you.
Well, and that's an excellent project, and I wanted them to share the cost of those projects, because that, those are huge investments in that area of our community. So the Spiderweb Project, the bridge across the railroad tracks there, is, is how much?
50.
50 million dollars. And, and that includes, for, for those watching and living in the area, there's gonna be a roundabout on the little cut-through street just on the other side of the Acesway, across in front of Tillenhurst, that little cut-through street. There's gonna be a roundabout there. And, and then the I-185 Buena Vista Road, Diverging Diamond, is, is something different for this community, and will take some getting used to for those in that area. How much is that project?
That one's 40, 20? That one's 20.
20 million dollars.
20 million on that one, and we will do an education process on that Diverging Diamond. I think we brought a video to council and showed you the video, how you migrate through that location, but they do have them in Atlanta, and you just kind of follow the lines and follow the traffic, but it is different for our area.
And then the Casita Road 185, we have a cost, a price on that?
Do we have a price? That one's 58, no.
58 million. So I, I mentioned those numbers to say that when you see what she has presented here today to include those projects, we are spending hundreds of millions of dollars to improve our transportation networks in Columbus, Georgia. And so you see construction all over town, and I, there was some chatter the, through the weekend and about fixing potholes, and the timing of this project is timely, because for those who have negative things to say about transportation work going on in this community to include potholes, I, I want this posted on our website.
Yes, sir.
Today. 'Cause I, I want them to get an education on what we have going on in Columbus in terms of transportation projects. Hundreds of millions of dollars, many, many projects, and you see it right here. So thank you for the update, and Mayor. We can move on from my agenda.
We've got Councilor Huff.
Mr. City Manager, I appreciate that so very much. Councilor Woodson and I have taken a beating for the last couple of weeks now.
Yes.
About potholes and things in this, in the city, but especially in our districts. So I appreciate you saying that, and I appreciate you putting it on the website.
Sure.
And keeping up, because it's been, we should do this, and we should do that, and it's, it's a process.
Yes.
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have some cleanup we've got to do. We had a resolution without a quorum at the beginning of our meeting, so if we could, get a motion for the resolution extending condolences and deepest sympathies to the family of Tamika Johnson. So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye. Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you would, please record that, and the resolution has already been delivered. We also have the minutes from the February 27th meeting of the Columbus City Council. If there are no, okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second? Any edits or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Great. They are approved. We will now turn it to our city attorney, Mr. Fay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I know we've got a couple of people out there been waiting on zoning hearings. The first one up is property at 1205 Front Avenue. This is the Eagle and Phoenix Powerhouse location, recommended for approval going to Central Riverfront District. Mr. McKenna is still here, if there are any questions. It's just on first reading.
Don't see any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, sir, for being here. We'll vote on that in two weeks at 5:30 meeting. The next zoning item is 1052 Center Street. It's going to residential multifamily, propose use single family.
Hold on just a second. Mr. Fay, did you ask for any opposition on the first read, just to make the rec-
No, let me do that real quick.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that wanted to be heard on the powerhouse zoning petition? All right. Doesn't look like it. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
The next one is 1052 Center Street, going to residential multifamily. Applicant is Donald Johnston. Did I hear this? Okay. And then it's recommended for approval. Any questions of council? Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this? Okay. Don't see any questions. If you'll come back in two weeks, they're gonna take a vote at the 5:30 meeting. Thank you for being here. All right, Mayor. The next item is Chapter Nine Amendment to Cemetery Fees and Regulations. I know council has had this to study for a while, but it's up for discussion. If there are any questions, I think Ms. Beegler is still here.
We don't have any questions at this time.
All right. We'll take a vote on that in two weeks. Item four, I think Mr. Hudson wants to come around just for a minute with a short PowerPoint, but this would split up inspection responsibility for sewer hookup between the waterworks and the city. Mr. Hudson, you want to run through that real quickly?
Yes. Morning, Council. Kind of going back through my favorite, Chapter 13, going through things that we see that we can do to make efficiencies better with us and other agencies. Ideally, it just comes down to sewer inspections. We had confusion in the field. We have contractors come up, and there'd be certain items outside of kind of the building footprint that needed to be inspected. And we were under the assumption that both us and along with the waterworks both had to check these types of facilities, whether it be grease trap, oil water separators, things like that. And so the contractor would either call the city and then get approved from the city and not call the waterworks, or go to the waterworks, get approved from the waterworks, and not call the city. And so we were just trying to separate that, so everyone knows what they're going for. All right. So we, we did some research, found in the state codes that anybody who holds a master plumbing license or a company that is a valid, valid utility contractor's license can repair plumbing systems, which would be outside of the building footprint. So therefore, that would cover those things, such as grease traps, things like that, that would need to be taken care of. So therefore, they wouldn't necessarily need the city's oversight. So the original, this is currently what the existing ordinance reads, is the applicant for the building sewer permit shall notify the Columbus Water Works before any backfill when the building sewer is ready for inspection and connection to public sewer. The connection shall be made under the supervision of a representative of the waterworks. What we want to do is modify that to say that an applicant for a commercial building sewer permit shall notify the waterworks before any backfill, and then on the residential side, shall just notify us, inspectors and codes, before any backfill is done. So we, so the waterworks would take the commercial properties, and then the city would take the residential properties. Ideally, there, the residential, we probably get, you know, four, four to one residential permits to, to commercial permits. So we would be able to still maintain those and be able to look at those, 'cause typically, those don't have any complications, any grease traps, anything major complicated that we can, we can take care of. Then that also, and, and on the, so the permit wouldn't change, 'cause if they still pull the commercial permit for plumbing or sewer, they would just check interceptor, and the interceptor would let us know that there's something additional we would need to inspect. But now, they only have to get their approval- But now, they only have to get their approval, which is a letter that we get from the waterworks saying that the grease trap has been, or something like that, has been approved. The contractors now only have to call one agency. So it's not, they have to call the city and then the city says, hey, make sure you call the waterworks. So the waterworks say, hey, make sure you call the city. They just have to contact the waterworks, they're done. And so we, we decided to keep the residential side because like I explained, we get four to one, more or less, permits a month, residential to commercial. So ideally, we would continue to do that, to continue our one stops, one, one-stop-shop approach. So that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be any questions at this time.
Okay. John, thank you for being here. We'll vote on that in two weeks then. Mayor, you should have a revised cover sheet with a Resolution Number Five at the table, sponsored by Councilor Davis. There's been a lot of talk and introduction of bills in the General Assembly that would preempt, prohibit local government action on certain matters, including sales of dogs and cats, and prevent localities from regulating these issues. Councilor Davis has a new revised resolution that's gone around the table and he may want to comment a little bit before y'all take a vote.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Ms. City Attorney. I'll just briefly speak on it. I think that, you know, a lot of people know this, it's the puppy milling bill and throughout the state of Georgia. I don't think it's really made it very far, but I guess there's a lot of lobbying efforts from the industries to try to push this. But what, in, in looking at this, there's far-reaching implications here. There's, there's so many things and it basically takes the authority out of the local governments from protecting the health and welfare of your community. We ought to be able to make decisions within our own community. This would completely, what they're trying to do would stop that and regulate it and we wouldn't have any say-so. And it would reach over not only with the puppy milling side, but it could go over to, you guys remember when the bath salts were issues, when the teenage kids were abusing those, or nitrous oxide, or even smoking regulations? I mean, you can just go across the board, but that would take it out of the hands of the local governing body to be able to address those issues in the community. It would be regulated at another level and telling us that basically, we don't know what's best for our community and therefore, therefore, you know, you can't make a decision on. And I think that would have a far-reaching impact here. So that's kind of the essence of this. The, 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 this resolution is just sending a letter up to our representatives, asking them to be on the lookout. I know we all have experienced in the past where at the last minute, some little sentence or amendment gets slipped into some bill that doesn't even pertain to this and then it's passed and then three months later, everybody says, well, I didn't know it was in that bill. So this is kind of just a heads up to be on the lookout. This is something that our community, I believe, would oppose. GMA opposes it. I think everybody here understands that the mayor knows, knows this well, in and out. So again, it's, I, I look at this as a matter of allowing local jurisdictions to make decisions within our community that affects the health and welfare in our community as a whole.
All right. All right, Councilor Davis, is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Mr. City Attorney, would you see that this is signed and we get it to our delegation as soon as possible? I've sent them several messages, I understand. One bill is, did not, or I think two didn't make crossover and one apparently has been abandoned. But nevertheless, you never know when something might sneak up. So if you'll...
The clerk will mail that up.
What's that?
The clerk will mail that up to the delegation.
Well, we probably need to email it up, is my point. So, you know, they've got about nine more days for passing things. So if you'll, Madam Clerk, get it to me as soon as the ink's dry and then we'll email it up to our delegation. Thank you. Anything else?
All right, unless Counselor Huff, I think, had a question or two for Director of Planning, Rick Jones, and maybe Mr. Hutchinson.
Okay.
Yes, I've received an inquiry about the different homes that are going up in the neighborhoods, whether it's assisted living, boys' homes, or whatever. And I just need an update on what the rulings are, the process, and what our ordinances say and everything so that I can get information back to one of my constituents.
Sure. She's getting the Director of Planning and Director of Inspections and Codes.
If he can just kind of give a brief overview and then you all can get me something in writing that, as a request, if I tell him I'll bring him something that he can read and understand what's going on. But I want you to kind of touch base with it and make sure that he has an idea, kind of an outline of how we operate.
Sure. And they are coming around now. Would you respond to Counselor Huff regarding group homes? What the law requires, their, if there are certain number, there's a... They are classified based on a number of individuals in a home and so forth and then any ordinances that apply otherwise.
Counselor Huff, you may recall that prior to 2014, the year 2014, we had, had in place an ordinance that had a thousand-foot separation for personal care homes. Personal care homes are by, by definition, under Unified Development Ordinance, are separated into three different classes. There is those that are six and under, which can primarily go into a residential area. And I'll talk a little bit more about that because that's a real concern we have. You go seven, seven to eighteen is considered a group of personal care home. Two, those cannot necessarily go into a residential area, they have to go elsewhere in the community. And then, of course, anything eighteen above, it's also that same, same classification. These are basically mirrored from state law and state requirements on that. The ones we're concerned about, and we're seeing a great influx of these things happening, are the personal care homes where there are six or under. Prior to 2014, we, again, we had that thousand-foot separation that required them to come to council that time to, to actually receive approval for that to happen. Based on, on a, on an opinion we got from the City Attorney's Office in 2014, our, our ordinance actually violated the Fair Housing Act. And we were, we were recommended to stop doing just that and we did. We pulled that from the ordinance so we didn't, didn't run into conflict and so forth. What Director Hutchison's going to tell you is how he is trying to go about enforcing that now and maintaining that and what he's, what he, what the challenges really are. But that's where we look at it from that standpoint now with those three classifications. And I'm going to let Director Hutchison come and fill you in about this enforcement activity.
Typically, we have a, a person that's interested in doing one, especially type one, six and less. They come to the office, they, we then get them in contact with the fire marshal. So the fire marshal has to go up there and review the facility, make sure that prompt evacuation can occur, make sure there's not anything done. Now, if the fire marshal comes and says, hey, we need to, you know, you need to add this or that, then they'll have to come and pull a burn permit regardless of it's plumbing or for whatever else they may need to, or the doors may need to be wired, or things like that. And so they'll come and pull a permit and then once they are cleared with the fire marshal, then they're allowed to open. We, we have had this on our radar. I think we have somewhere close to 200 right now in all different stages. Phase one, two, and three, we pulled that from a business license. And we do plan on meeting with City Attorney's Office here at the end of the week to kind of discuss some additional regulations for, for those types of homes.
So would a constituent call into your office or?
Director Hutchison.
Yeah, they would call us. We go out there to verify that, A, they have a CO to be able to perform that type of work and then if not, then they will be cited.
Okay, because I think the concern was there was something going on in a particular house.
Correct.
And they were denying the fact that it was going that direction because they don't have permits or anything.
Correct. We would verify that the CO was at that location and we can look those back. We have all of those archived. So even if it may have been before 20, 2008, when we had intergov, any, any permits before then, we'd have those COs. And so we, we go out to that site, verify if they're supposed to be having that and then we can also take count of beds. Because then we know, if, we say, hey, if we see seven beds in there, then we know they're above the six and then therefore, we can, we can, we can act accordingly.
Okay, would it be possible to get something like a brief synopsis of what you all just said? That I can give him to take a look at?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Counselor Huff, let me add one other, one other caveat to this, this conversation is yes, you can go out there and have these now with six or less, but you're still required to maintain that residence as a residence. I mean, you can't advertise the signage on, you can't change the driveways, you can't change the appearance of the house. It has to still remain as a single-family residence in those areas. So it looks like every other house basically in that neighborhood. So that's, that's, that's the thing that John, his, his team has to look at in terms, make that determination.
But you're still supposed to know that is going on.
And we encourage people, if you see something or if you know they're in violation, say something. Call us, they can call 311, or they can call Inspections and Codes directly. Our preference is that they call 311. Whether it's a pothole in the road or you think there's non-emergency improper activity at a home like that, dial 311.
Yeah, but lately, Counselor Woodson and I are 311, so.
Yeah.
But thank you, I appreciate that update. Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, that concludes your agenda.
That's all we had listed, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've got now public agenda and so we're going to call forward members of our community that have requested to come speak with us. First is Susan Gallagher, representing New Horizons Behavioral, behavioral, behavioral...
Behavioral.
Sorry. Development Disability Awareness Month. And so Susan, you know how this works. We're going to put five minutes on the clock and I'm going to practice saying behavioral.
Okay, great. I don't think I'm going to take five minutes. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Councilors, Mr. City Manager. Susan Gallagher with New Horizons Behavioral Health. "We're Building Better Lives" is not just our motto, it's a promise to the communities that we serve. It's estimated that one out of six children ages two to 17 has either a physical, language, learning, or behavioral ability, different ability that impacts on their learning. It's also estimated in the state of Georgia, we have about 145,000 adults living with a developmental disability. March is National Developmental Disability Awareness Month and I'd like to bring attention during this month to individuals that are living with this, different abilities, to promote respect for and inclusion of these individuals and to promote our own collective awareness as a, a civil society to incorporate individuals with different abilities into everyday life. And at this time, I'd like to thank some employers in the community that make a special effort to have an inclusive and diverse workforce by including adults with developmental disabilities in their workforce. I'd like to thank the special educational professionals in our school district for having a more inclusive classroom and learning environment. And I'd like to thank those direct care professionals that provide residential supports, employment supports, community access supports to individuals with developmental disabilities and recognize some of our partner organizations such as Easter Seals of, of the area, Special Olympics, Project Launch with the Health Department that promotes early recognition of developmental disabilities, and our own New Horizons Developmental Disabilities Programs and staff. So just to let the community know, March is Developmental Disability Awareness Month and to be respectful and inclusive of individuals with different abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate what you do. It's such a valued partnership for us, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the time.
All right. And next we have Mr. Christopher Canada. Oh, he, oh, okay, I'm sorry. And next we have Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior, who's representing Omega Psi Phi fraternity. He would like to speak to us about the Fatherhood Conversation Forum. Welcome, Mr. Broadwaters. So glad to have you with us. You know how it, how it works.
Oh, yeah, I'll wait until this, these documents are passed out before I start with my five minutes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
My name is, my name is Marvin Broadwater Senior. I reside at 3004 Slippery Rock Court, Columbus, Georgia, 31909. I am here this morning to solicit your attendance as well as inform your constituents of a Fatherhood Conversation event on March 17, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Canaan Baptist Church. That's 2835 Brenton Woods Drive, Columbus, Georgia. The church is directly across from Fort Middle School, as you see on the flyer. As many of you are aware, I serve as the State Representative of Georgia, State Organization of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. And we are an organization that believes in community outreach and involvement as we are all serving leaders. I have observed a vicious cycle for many of our fathers in this great state as it relates to child support. The cycle starts with a late or nonexistent child support payment. Driver's license then are revoked. The father or parent is arrested, loses his job, arrested again for a crime. And it's, and the cycles continue. Meanwhile, no father is in the child's life. This program gives that father a chance to break the cycle. Because of this cycle, the Georgia State Organization of Omega Psi Phi has partnered with the Georgia Department of Human Services Fatherhood Program to conduct fatherhood conversations around this great state of Georgia. The first conversation for 2018 will occur here in Columbus and will become the blueprint, the blueprint or model for over 40 communities around the state. Those fathers who are unaware of the services and benefits this program affords will have an opportunity to engage subject matter expert during the forum. The goals of the Fatherhood Conversation are to inform the community of the numerous services offered to the non-custodial parent, especially fathers, and to dispel any misconception of the Department of Human Services Fatherhood Program. Topics to be discussed, but, but not limited to are driver's license reinstatement, child support services, GND, GED enrollment, job training, job placement, job search, volunteer work opportunities, and support order modification where applicable. I believe all challenging issues facing our governing and policymaking bodies are interrelated. Crime, economy, homelessness, unemployment, domestic violence, prison population, poverty, and a plethora of other challenging community concerns. If we dim the radiance of one issue, we consequently decrease the radiance of another simultaneously. Fathers who find themselves in child support areas will benefit tremendously from this program. The plan is to blanket the city and inform all citizens of this program, the form and its benefits with the ultimate goal of ensuring the child has a father in his or her life. Please join us and inform your constituents in your respective districts of this important event. I hope to see you there. Thank you for your time and your continued support as your dead, and as well as your dedication of service to our great community. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Ms., I have some community leaders from my fraternity. And I'd like to introduce Ms...I have some community leaders from my fraternity, as well as Ms. Gina Lackley, who serves as the Regional Fatherhood Program Manager. I think I have a couple of minutes if she would like to say something.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity to be here. I am the Region Manager with the Division of Child Support Services. I want to take this opportunity to thank Omega Psi Phi for partnering with us to promote this event that we have this Saturday. It is an opportunity to share with the community our Fatherhood Program, which is one of the outreach services that the Division of Child Support offers our non-custodial parents. We hope that the community will come out and take advantage of that. As Mr. Broadwater said, it's an opportunity to come and take advantage of our services, meet our child support, dispel some of the feelings that some people may have about the child support in the Division of Child Support Services. Georgia is one of the only states that have a statewide Fatherhood Program, so we just want our community to come out and take advantage of that. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Broadwater? We've got a lot.
That's it.
Okay, we've got folks lined up to talk to you. We've got First Counselor Barnes.
Kudos to you. This is something that has long should have occurred. The City Manager and I are involved in the Fatherhood Program at the jail, and we are constantly, always hearing this, where individuals may have a bump, may have missed a payment, they're arrested. Here's the horrendous part of it, some of them are that out, they don't have their driver's license, how are they going to get back and forth to work? And it's perpetuation of an already bad situation. And I noticed on here, a number of things that need to be addressed, but here's one that a lot of people, and I'm sure that the City Manager hears it, even here, when they go, when they're released, realtors don't have to rent to them. And this is horrendous. And thank God for Neil Richardson and the Valley Rescue Commission areas where they can't have a place to stay. So this is, I'm glad that you're attacking this issue, but there's a plethora of other things that need to be addressed in this. And who suffers? Other child, the children suffer. And I never did see the logic of something like this here. I mean, why would you take a person's license or incarcerate them to the extent where they can't do what you want them to do? It just seems illogical. So thank you all for stepping out on this issue, I will be there. It's something that's near and dear to my heart, and I just give kudos to you, ma'am, and your organization, and Omega Psi Phi.
All right, and we have Counselor Huff.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do, and for you all partnering up together. For your information this morning, we tease each other all the time, but being, they're Omegas and I'm an Alpha. But the Alphas and Omegas and the Capes and all of the Divine Nine work very well together in this city. And I just want to compliment Omega Psi Phi on the great work that they do here in the city. I'll be present there on Saturday morning, and to take it all in. I think I'm a little bit more involved than that, I know, but I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, we do plan to have a panel there to answer questions.
I think I may be part of that.
I think you're part of it, I think you are. Just that opportunity to have a panel there to answer the questions. And again, you know, some of the things that fathers are not aware that are available to them, such as the driver's license reinstatement and that sort of thing, what we want to do is work with our fathers who have those issues, and help them to resolve those issues, and then be able to go forth and hopefully make those financial obligations that have been court ordered.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we have Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Broadwater, thank you so much for what you're doing. I'm wondering if you could send this flyer by email to Ms. Washington, our Clerk of Counsel, and she can get it out to us, so we can post this on our social media pages, so that it give you a little more exposure in the community for this event. Her email is t washington@columbusga.org.
Yes, Counselor, as you said, the military will call.
Thank you.
One of the things with the event as well, it will be streamed on Facebook Live. It is, the event will be streamed live as well through the Department of Human Services Facebook page, so it'll also be there to reach some people who may not be able to get out to the event, but will be able to watch it through Facebook.
All right, we have Counselor Woodson.
Thank you very much. Just as my colleagues say, we needed this a long time ago. I remember talking to someone that I saw, and I'm not sure if it was your fraternity or whose, where they had five young men that they were teaching how to iron, how to tie their ties, the basic things, because they did not have a father to show them, you know. And I thought it was very interesting, and just, I'm going to plug in a little bit, and I'll call you later. There's a school that is looking for fathers to be mentors, in a school, where there is children that have absence of dads, and I will talk to you about that later, I'll call you. But what I wanted to say about this is, I'm hoping and praying that this is not just a one-year event. I think it's so much critical need, I think it should be done more than once, because you might not get the amount of participation now, because there's a lot going on, but it's a subject that needs to be ongoing. And I would like to suggest and add to it, you have some fathers that are good fathers, but the partner stops them from having a relationship with their child. So I would like to see Fatherhood continue, not only in these topics here, but additional topics that are affecting fathers, you know, today. And Georgia has laws in place that are not father-friendly to the good fathers that want to be a part of their children's lives. And there are so many ties and so much boundary, so I'm, you could tell I'm a cheerleader for this, because I just feel that this is very, very important in our children's lives.
I'll take back that thirty seconds now, Mayor, but one of the things that I was very impressed by, met a young man that entered the program, went through the program, graduated from Georgia Tech. After he graduated, he became an executive with Goodwill. Now, here's someone that was having difficulties, the same as a lot of those young men out there are, but he entered the program. Somebody introduced the program to him, that's all it takes sometimes, is to just expose, exposure is everything.
Well, I have cut this, the one I got, I'm not very good with social media, but I cut it all up and put it, and put it on my Facebook already. And I suggest to you and to the public hearing, when you send us stuff and you would like us to share it on our Facebook, send us an email, because it's kind of, I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm not very savvy in social media, and it is too time-consuming for me. But I did take a picture of it, I cropped it, and I've been passing it out. But I just think we need to do more than one forum. I think the topics are so broad. I think we should not just, like I said earlier, I don't think we should focus on just the fathers that are having problems. I think we need to support the fathers that are trying to be a good father, and not allowed to be a good father.
And I thank you for mentioning that. We do have another event that is scheduled in the month of April, whereas this is, as we mentioned, is a conversation, is an opportunity to hopefully reach those who need help with certain issues. Our next event that's scheduled in April is a Fatherhood Celebration, and this will be an opportunity where we hope that our fathers will be able to come out with their children and have a fun day. We plan to have fun events, bouncy house, things that those fathers can bring their children to and have a fun day with their child on that event, and that will be in April, and we'll get some more information out about that coming up.
As soon as you can, can you make sure we get it?
Absolutely.
Because I would love to push it.
Absolutely, yes, you will.
This is very dear to me, because I just think a father, you know, you only have one mother, that's just the bottom line to life, that's what I've learned. But a father also plays an important role. And you were created by two, not one.
Absolutely.
And two should be part of your life, even if they don't get along. That should be put aside, because the value of the child and the well-being of the child should be your priority, not your relationship. And I'm in this community quite often, I'm the type, I don't announce myself, I just go in quietly, I don't say who I am, and I hear and I see, and this is a subject that's very dear to me, because you do have some good fathers out there that don't have that opportunity that they would love, so I like to help to promote it. I would love to push it, especially, I'm supportive of this, don't get me wrong, but I just feel sometimes we hear about one segment of a community, and we don't hear about the other one. And it's like they say, it takes a village to raise a child, it takes a village to help a father, to be a father.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure that people around this table and those watching know that I am a proud member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity, and have been since nineteen seventy-six. And the other thing I'd like for them to know is that I am proud of the leadership of Mr. Marvin Broadwater. He is our State Representative, and what that means is that for all of the Omega Men in the state of Georgia, he is the leader of the Omegas for the entire state of Georgia, and he's right here in Columbus, Georgia. So I commend him and congratulate him for that, and for his leadership on this great project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're getting worse than the Mayor Pro Tem, by the way. Recognizing your affiliation with your fraternity and sorority. Can we put this on the CCG? Yeah, okay, let's see, we've got the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the CCG, but also, can you get with Mike King? I don't know if he can come Saturday's workshop, or next month, but I think this is worthy of CCG.
Definitely, even in the life that they're going to do, probably if we can get it to CCG.
Okay, let's see. We've got Counselor Barnes.
I know the organizations don't...
Bruce.
Others that are providing, notice on the Davis Pro Tem, providing food and all the other things in conjunction with this.
Well, I've actually sent this to everyone in the Divine Nine, I've sent it to, actually, we got some judges that are coming.
There we go.
I've sent it to law enforcement, because I want, and sometimes there's a negative connotation when you have law enforcement at these events, but the law enforcement there is just to dispel, dispel any of those type of misconnotations. So we've sent it to the Masonic Orders, I mean, it's gone out, Councilman Barnes, it has gone out, but I'm still, we're still plugging every day this week. I leave from here, we're going right over to the library and talk to folks, so we're still plugging every single day.
I hear, this is going to be a fantastic turnout.
Yes, sir.
Because I have heard it, there are a number of organizations that really want to be a part of it. As I said previously, this is something which should have been done and started long ago, but you want to know something, the Lord's timing is always on time. And so I'm just thankful that Omega Psi Phi, ma'am, your organization, have just stepped up to get something like this started. Thank you so much again.
And thank you all for the time.
All right, thank you. Yeah, all right, thank you so much, appreciate all you do. Next we have Brandy Cliett, who's here representing Tree of Life Healthcare and the Community Health Fair. Ms. Cliett. Oops, Ms. Cliett not here, well, she comes in before we conclude the agenda, the public agenda, we will let her up. Next we have Mr. James Thorson. Mr. Thorson, are you here? Okay, all right. And so last we have Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore, who would like to talk with us about a meeting request.
Good morning. Good morning, Counsel. I am Audrey Holston-Palmore, and I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia. On today, I have composed another letter to make an appeal to the Public Safety Director, Teresa Tomlinson, who is also the Mayor of Columbus. The, I hope it can be seen on the prompt. It states, Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from the desk of Audrey Holston-Palmore, Dear Public Safety Director of Columbus, Georgia, Teresa Tomlinson, I have, I am here at the Columbus, Georgia City Council Meeting to request a meeting with you on any day of next week, which dates are Monday, March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteenth, until March twenty-third, which is listed as a Friday. I will insist the composer of a police report, case number one seven zero one three two dash one one dash zero zero one, be present. I'd like to repeat that case number, it is one seven zero one three two dash one one dash zero zero one. I am requesting and insisting that the composer of this police report be present. I am not understanding the report contents. Please use the United States Postal Service to inform me of the meeting date and time. My address is ten thirty-five Lawyer's Lane in Columbus, Georgia, the zip code is three one nine oh six, and it's signed Audrey Holston-Palmore. I'm also sending copies to the active council members of the Columbus Consolidated Government and the City Manager. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Palmore.
My time, I still...
Okay, it's still running.
Now, this is my fourth time coming before the council requesting a meeting with the Public Safety Director. At the end of my presentation of a request, Ms. Tomlinson has, again, for the last three times, which I hope will not happen this time, made remarks which I consider to be mental clutter, and it alludes to the public to reflect on past injustices or infraction charges that were placed upon me, but expunge for lack of evidence in regards to my behavior as being criminally regulated. I am asking that this report, the one that I repeated the number on, and I gave to her designated assistant at the East Columbus Middle School, I gave the report to the gentleman that spoke with me, saying that he represented Teresa Tomlinson. And I stressed that this is not anything related to what she brought up in regards to past charges related to a church that my beloved father worked at for forty years. This has nothing to do with that, and I don't know her purpose or what her strategy is for bringing that up, but I want the public to know that this is not related, it is unrelated to those past charges, and therefore, I feel that the report does not give clarity to what I want to talk with her about in regards to the composer, and it's very important that the composer of the report be present. So therefore, I have to keep coming and requesting, because I have not heard anything via U.S. Postal Service, and I don't understand that as well, because she is serving as the Public Service Director, and I feel that that is a neglect of duty of a person who lives in Columbus, Georgia, who has been living here... Georgia, who has been living here, and I shall continue to live here. So, I want to have the meeting, and I feel that it's necessary for you to contact and stop saying the erroneous information that you shared in December, January, February, and I'm hoping that you will not say that is related to my request for a meeting on today.
Thank you, Ms. Palmore. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. That concludes our public agenda. What we will do at this time, though, is we have a family here, the Hennessys, who, the Hennessy family, and so, we're gonna pull a matter up, this shouldn't take but a moment, from the clerk's desk, and before we go into the city manager's agenda. So, Bruce, can you cue the clerk's, yes, there you go. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, Madam Mayor and members of council, listed on the clerk's agenda as item number seven is a request for honorary designation that has been submitted by Mr. Ronzel Buckner, requesting an honorary designation for the late Misselma Hennessy on the Brown Avenue Bridge from Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to Casita Road. What's that? Is that a state road?
That's, it's actually a local bridge, but it was built using state funds.
So, I think it can be.
It can be, yes.
It can be, just so.
And if it is the desire of the council, we would need a motion to refer this to the Board of Honor?
Got a motion in second for approval.
The motion for?
It's.
To name the bridge.
No, no.
It's to refer it to the Board of Honor.
Yeah.
Sorry, correction, refer.
To refer it. Madam Clerk, why don't you just read it one more time?
The request is to submit an honorary designation, and this request will be forwarded to the Board of Honor for the late Misselma Hennessy to honorarily designate the Brown Avenue Bridge from Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to Casita Road in honor of Misselma Hennessy.
All right. And so, we have a motion in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? All right, we have, Counselor Woodson would like to make remarks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And I, excuse me, I kinda got carried away and excited by saying that. I know it has to go to the board, because I've been working with Mr. Ronzel to ensure that we had everything necessary for the consideration of the board. But I just wanna ask the family and friends from his wife that are here, if they would please stand. They all represent what Ms. Hennessy represented, and it was important for them to be here to demonstrate to our council and our community that this is a great honor for a woman that was just amazing, a wonderful woman who really didn't care, got life threats. Oh, she was strong, too. She would pull my little ear sometimes. She was a very, a big, big fighter, but because of her, a lot of changes happened. Because of her, we use that state law where if a house gets to the courts two or three, three or four times, you can take the home away. Thanks to Ms. Hennessy, we did that on Hubbard Street, and that was like a tactical mission when we did that. So, I remember very much. So, to have that bridge, and as long as it took us to get that bridge built, I think this is the perfect name, and I wanna say personally to my colleagues, thank you for supporting this to go to the board, and we hope and pray that they can see the value of naming this bridge after this wonderful woman, and that would also give empowerment to others to fight for their community, no matter what threats, no matter what. Fight for what you believe, because at the end of the day, you will get your wish and your accomplishment. And thank you for sacrificing your family to us to help us fight the things we need to in our community, and I hope and pray that it goes through.
Thank you. And Mr. Buckner, you're not standing?
I know, he should stand up.
Friends, family supporter.
He sure caught me.
Thank you, all right. Okay, we've got Counselor Huff.
Good morning. Congratulations. We go way, 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 way back. And Mrs. Hennessy was one of those that would talk to me about certain things, but I admired her for her ability to be outspoken. She had a way of letting you know things, and she would hope that you understood, but she understood what she was saying. So, if you didn't, you got a second chance to talk with her about it. So, for the trail that you've been on for a while, I know it's been a while to try to get to this day, and we've been working through a lot of issues about different things that had nothing to do with her. So, it's nice to get back to just a simple day of honoring her and her name and the family. So, thank you all for sharing her with us, sharing her with us and all that she did for this community. Thank you.
All right, we have Counselor Thomas.
Mayor, for the folks who are listening out there, would you go through what the procedure is at this point, what we have done and what, how this will go on? I would like for the community and for the family to be sure that they understand what happens next.
Okay. Well, I'll let the city attorney explain anything, but generally speaking, it's that we refer it to a board, a citizen board that has been appointed, who assesses a criteria related to whether a particular road, bridge, whatever it may be, public property, be designated in honor of a particular person who has served the community, and then at that time, their recommendation will come back to council for a vote. So, Clifton, did you wanna elaborate on any of that or correct?
You've covered it all. They do have, they have to take a vote and send it back here for approval.
It's former elected officials that serve on the, on the board, so.
To know what happens next.
What's that? Yes, and it does have to be a deceased individual. Okay. All right, we've got the Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanna say, it was a pleasure knowing Ms. Hennessy, and I've had the distinct privilege of representing several different areas in Columbus, even though they're not in my district now. But during the first part of my tenure, I worked very closely with her and Mr. Buckner. We marched a lot of nights and a lot of days, but she was very serious. It didn't matter that she was an older person. She was right up front, and those were the days.
Fantastic. Counselor Barnes.
All I can say is ditto. Many people in the community knew Ms. Hennessy. She was fearless, many times standing out there at the drug houses. And Ronzel, I just wanna thank you for your tenacity in staying with this, to have something to honor a citizen who gave so much of her time and her efforts for this city. So, I wanna thank you personally for something like this here, and congratulate the family.
All right. Well, again, thank you all for coming. This is exciting. We'll be able to hear something soon, next couple of months. You should be hearing something, and I'm glad we were able to bring it up a little bit. I think we saved you maybe an hour and 15 minutes. So, I wish we could have had it before, but we had a lot of folks in line. So, thank you all for your patience. And with that, we'll end our public agenda. We'll turn it over to the city manager. If you could hit your mic, Mr. City Manager. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. First, on my agenda, I've got the Metra T-Spot route changes. Let me just refresh your memory. Of course, the Metra officials were here at the last meeting and had a final public hearing here at this council, at the last council meeting, but the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax allocated $22.4 million for improvement of our public transit system. And so, October 22nd, 2016, Metra implemented changes to its existing bus routes by adding three fixed routes, two paratransit routes, and they extended service until 11:30 PM using these dollars. Metra came to council and to provide the city council with an annual update of the new routes and service effectiveness a few months ago. They have recommended proposed service changes, and they presented those to council, and we are attempting to move forward with approval of those changes related to routes that have proven to be unproductive or inefficient. And so, the route changes would reduce the number of service hours on low-performing routes, which would result in some cost savings for the city. And so, the elimination of low ridership routes and trips would help to extend the life of that $22.4 million beyond the end of collection, which is 2022. What we've presented to you would extend, we know, through 2029 and beyond. And so, what Metra committed is that they would come back here with an annual update to this council, where they will have identified routes that are unproductive, or portions of routes that have been unproductive, and we would no longer provide that service. And by doing that, they will get the routes down to where they need to be, where they are most productive and most efficient. And so, they presented the first round of that a couple of weeks ago. In fact, they've had three public hearings. They had two at Metra, and they had one here at this council. And I think it's unquestionable what they presented, that the portion of routes, or routes that they are proposing to eliminate, or those hours of service they are proposing to eliminate are unproductive, inefficient, and would not make sense for us to continue to do it. And so, that will allow us to extend that money much beyond the 2022 expiration date of collecting those dollars. I shared with you at the last meeting, this is very, very important, it is very, very important, that they come back with annual reviews and updates, because when we look at what we added in terms of service and the cost of that service to what they had prior to the T-Spots, we were spending somewhere, we started a little over $2 million a year. And when we do that, we get it down below that, and that money will take us for many years to come. And so, if we pay for inefficient routes, we're gonna run out of money prior to that timeframe. So, this process this year and in future years is very important. And so, with that, we are asking you to approve the requested changes in the Metra route.
We've got a motion in second for approval. That's Mayor Pro Tem with a motion, Counselor Barnes with a second. Is there any questions related to this motion? Seeing none, would you cue the item for electronic vote, please? And is ready for your vote? And it does pass. I think we're missing one. Madam, Mayor Pro Tem, we need your vote. I don't know, something's wrong with her button.
Are you trying to put yes?
Well, she's, she's voting yes. It's not working, so. Uh-uh. Record her as a yes. Thank you, Tony. Okay, it does pass then. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I do see that there are some people in the audience, and they were here, and they had an opportunity to participate in the public hearings that we've had, and I want to acknowledge them, and if they've got questions, Metra officials are here in the back, and we'll be happy to talk to them, to provide any clarification. So, I just wanted to note that.
Okay.
But next.
Why don't we have, if we have our Metra folks, why don't we have them meet 'em just at the door to say hello? If not, they are there. They're at the door. So, if you all have any questions about the change in the bus routes, or about our plan and the strategy that we're trying to employ to make sure these dollars go as far as possible and deliver the best possible Metra service, please direct your comments to them. We really appreciate your time being here today and your input during this process. So, thank you all.
Next on my agenda, Madam Mayor, is Adult Felony Drug Court. It's a grant, $331,826.
We've got a motion and a second for approval. Does anyone have any questions related to the Adult Felony Drug Court grant? Seeing none. Bruce, if you would, please cue this for voting. Let's see, we're missing, looks like Counselor Garrett. Yeah, there we go. Okay.
I've got.
It passes.
I've got it. Image Trend Hosting. It's for Columbus Fire EMS. It's $19,800.
Got a motion in second to approve the Image Trend Hosting. Are there any questions related to this item? Seeing none, please cue the item for electronic voting. And you can press your button if it is working. It is. All right, there we go.
I've got computer.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We've got Mayor Pro Tem has a question.
The only thing, question I had was, that $18,000 is just for this fiscal year, right? The 198?
It's just for what now?
Just for one, this fiscal year?
The rest of this fiscal year.
2018 fiscal year?
Yes.
So, how much is it gonna cost for a full fiscal year?
I had just not heard of it before. I don't know if they had talked about it before.
Yes, right now, the host image system, we're paying, I think, $17,800. So, the 198 would be additional cost, because it would actually go to Image Trend. They would host a system that would go to their server, which would be good for us, because right now, the city has that server, and Forest totally is in total agreement with us moving to this, because it would free up the city's server space and would give us more access to Image Trend. As of right now, if there's an issue with the reporting system, sometimes it's delayed in getting to us, because we don't get those automatic updates through Image Trend. So, this will allow us to get that in a more timely manner.
And this is, this is an annual?
Right, it's an annual fee.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And it's already been voted on, right, Tony? Yeah, we did that. Okay, so it's passed.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We've got approval of, a motion in second to approve B through E, which is alternative fuel and highway impact fees, trophies and other miscellaneous awards, water management services, and contract extension of mental health services from Muscoia County Jail. Is there any discussion related to any of those items, B through E?
I have an A.
I guess somebody wants to talk about it separate, so we'll go ahead and work on the motion we have. Hearing none, if you could go ahead, Bruce, and cue B, C, D, and E. Bless you. Let's see, that seems to have gotten everybody that tongue. Okay, now we have item A, Mr. City Manager. We've got a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. City Manager, you wanna tell us what it's about?
Computer Installation Programming Services for Police Pursuit Vehicles. You approved for them in a prior meeting, 10 new pursuit vehicles, and this would be the Motorola component installation program of those new computers, and so, we're asking your approval.
Okay. Any comment on this item, A? All right, seeing none. Bruce, could you cue that for voting? Let's see, Counselor Woodson, could you hit it a little harder there? Okay, there we go. It's not being very sensitive today. Thank you. All right, and so, that does pass. All right, and so that does pass. So Mr. City Manager, we'll turn over you for presentations and updates.
Madam Mayor, I've got two additional presentations. The first, as we approach summer months, we're going to be dealing with swimming pools. And we've been looking at swimming pools as we prepare for the coming swim season. And so Parks and Rec officials are here to share with us the challenges that they are having with getting ready to open a couple of our major pools. And so we wanted to do a swimming pools update. I've got Becky Glisten here. She's Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. And Holly Browder could not be here. She is attending to family matters related to her husband and could not be here. And so we have the Assistant Director, Becky Glisten.
Good afternoon. We just wanted to give you a brief update on the state of our outdoor pools this year. The first slide, which I have to do. Closer, I'm sorry. The first slide, we're just going to do a quick timeline for you to show you that in 2001 through 2003, Rigdon, Shirley, and Salmon Road Pools were built. In 2010, we totally renovated Double Churches Pool. On March 31st, we presented an outdoor pool study to city council about various problems, issues that we were having with the pools. And I brought copies, if you need another copy of those as well. In February of 2016, we spent over $574,000 on Rigdon and Shirley and Salmon Road repairs, trying to bring them up to date. In January of '27, repairs were performed on Shirley Winston Pool to repair a leak at the bottom of the gutter lines. We did this in-house with facilities maintenance, and that cost was $50,000. Right now, Salmon Road Pool appears that we have a leak in the return piping from the gutter system. This is indicated by the fact that the water has dropped to approximately that level and stabilized there. The pool will not be able to be opened without these necessary repairs. The pool will have to be dug up and repaired, and this will have to be contracted to an outside vendor. This is not something that we can do in-house. The estimated cost is anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000. Of course, once they get in there, the pool will have to be dug up. So once they get in there, we will know more, but that is our estimated cost right now. And the estimated timeframe before they get in there is two to three months of work, which is going to be very close to the opening day, if at all, for Salmon. Shirley Winston, this pool appears to be leaking from its lowest point, which is the main return drains at the deep end of the pool. It will not hold water and is leaking sufficiently enough that the auto fill system will not keep up. Once again, this pool cannot open as it is, it'll have to have repairs. Same estimation, a little bit more, $200,000 to $250,000, and take the same timeframe without knowing once we get the pool dug up. If you look at the pictures on the left, this was February 8th where the pool was. And then on the one on the right shows it empty on February 23rd. That's how quickly that pool drained. Double Churches and Rigdon, I have to tell you that since we did this presentation yesterday, we realized we have a significant issue at Double Churches as well. That pool is currently drained. This is Billy Lee, he is our pool supervisor for all of our pools. He drained it himself yesterday and thinks that he can do the repairs on his own, but we won't know until it's drained and we look at the piece. So there is some trouble with Double Churches right now. Both of these being closed, we can either try to get them repaired in time, if we can come up with the funds, or we can just try to open Double and Rigdon only. And then, of course, we also have the Aquatic Center that we can try to send people to. Kind of quick, but any questions?
All right, we've got the Mayor Protem.
Mr. City Manager, what can we do? Now, this is an emergency.
Well, it is.
We don't open these pools, we got problems.
Well, I wanted to, them to come as quickly as possible, considering they've shared with me that it could take two to three months to make repairs. They obviously do not have a funding source. And our only funding source that would be available would be fund balance. And if we consider their estimates, and their estimates are close, based on what they've presented with Salmon Road, $150,000 to $200,000, and Shirley Winston, $200,000 to $250,000, we would have to do the repairs out of fund balance. And currently, we are at approximately 63 days fund balance. And we would probably use as much as one day of fund balance if their numbers are accurate and on point. If their numbers, if it's not as much as what they project, then it would not be quite a day. But if it's more than what they project, it would be slightly more than a day. And so I do agree with you that our community expect to have these swim facilities open. And we need to do something. And so as timing could not be worse, as we are in the budget prep process and we've got a lot of requests. And it's going to take a lot of effort to present a balanced budget, but we will. But I would have to recommend, as I know this is a priority for the people around this table and for our citizens, I'd have to recommend that we use fund balance to make the necessary repairs. Of course, we've got to, we need to get assessments on these pools to get, to true up the numbers, projections. But if their projected cost is accurate, it's going to take $450,000 to $500,000 to get it done.
To me, this is worth that day that we would use the fund balance. Because we either going to use it here or we going to use it somewhere else.
Okay, we've got Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, this money, this, these numbers that we're talking about, this is for repair of these, not replacement, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And I noticed that the Shirley Winston Pool, we spent a good bit two years ago. Is this typical, that it would, it would need this kind of major repair in two years? My, I'm trying to get to the point of, when do we stop putting a Band-Aid on these things and fix them so we don't have to come back every two years and spend another $200,000?
And that's a good question. The pools, when we constructed those pools back in the late 90s, 1999, 2000, whenever it was, we spent $2 million to construct the pools. And so we're approaching 20 years in terms of age. And you received an update a few weeks ago from Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin. We do have aging infrastructure. And I agree with you that we are going to have to make some critical decisions in the coming months if we want to deal with the infrastructure challenges that we have that are critical to the citizens of this community. Not just swimming pools, but we're talking about softball complex and all the other stuff that's aged. And now, when we constructed it back then, it was state of the art, but it has aged. But you're right, we have spent more money than I would like to continue to spend every other year or so on aging pools, and we've got to make a decision. But, you know, it takes time to construct major facilities like this. And you've got to have a funding source to completely redo, renovate, or build new facilities like this. And we're going to have to talk about something like a special purpose local option sales tax if we are going to be able to get this done as we go forward.
Well, I'm, I'm, I remain to approve this request for that day. I go along with what the Mayor Protem said. But I really am looking for something from your operation on how do we move forward on these things? And how do we, what are the priorities? You know, I get questions all the time about, you know, the restrooms on the Riverwalk or the, you know, this, that, or the other. And I understand that all of these things are costly. But what I'd like to see is, let's, let's do what we can, get these up to speed, get them open, and then have some, have some discussion and plan about how we're going to move forward to get these things replaced, not necessarily Band-Aided.
Right, I absolutely agree.
Thank you.
Were they on your proposed SLOSS list that you began talking to the councilors about?
Well, when we start talking to them, yes.
We haven't had any kind of conversation.
Wait a minute now, we had a, Lisa had a presentation, I remember Alva running a headline.
Lisa made a presentation, but we didn't talk about it.
Yeah, that was, I mean, that's why I mentioned the entire infrastructure, buildings and infrastructure is what.
That was our facilities assessment.
Yeah, facilities assessment. And they were on that, they were on that list.
I don't know, I'm sure I know the difference. It was hundreds of millions of dollars of things that needed to be repaired, including pools.
We did a comprehensive facilities assessment, is what she did, more than 600 structures and.
Right, well, I think what I hear then, council saying, I consider it part of the process. And so I think what they're saying is, please come back so they can winnow that process down.
Absolutely.
I think you need to make a proposed list of priorities and then show them the list of stuff you didn't put on the priorities list and let them start moving it around.
And let's do that as quickly as.
Yeah, because see, they're already saying, I don't remember, you know, it's been delayed. You know, we need to keep on it.
Well, I fully remember the conversation and the list. What I don't recall is, and here's how we're going to fix it. And that's what I'm saying, let's, let's get to, here's how we're going to fix it as quickly as we can.
I agree.
Well, well, we are, we presented you the comprehensive facilities update status, and we told you whether, we gave them a grade. And of course, the pools were on that list. And so we are going to be having more conversation with you, not just about pools. That's why I mentioned soft commons and other facilities and structures. We've got, we've got to have a lot of conversation.
Well, I think what we're saying is, it's an urgent priority for us. So let's do that as a referral as soon as possible, if not at our next meeting, the next meeting, come back with that next step. Because it's not going to be, there's no need in waiting till it's perfected to bring it to council. You might as well take a crack at it, let them massage it some, take another crack at it. It's going to be a process. So there's no need waiting for some refined, perfect list because they're just going to, you know, deconstruct it and reform it. And might as well go ahead and get started. So let's plan on either the next meeting or the next meeting coming back with a priority A, and then sort of the other stuff that was needed too, or, you know, whatever. With some totals of, I think we do have totals, of what that would cost to repair or replace, and let people start getting their arms around what that next step is. So, okay, we have Counselor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, a while back, you came to the council with a recommendation dealing with salary savings. I think the majority came out of CPD and Parks and Recs. Where is that salary savings at today?
Well, as we continue through this fiscal year, there is salary savings across the board. And what we will do is see that through the end of the fiscal year. And then, of course, we'll look at revenue to expenses. Hopefully, revenue is up and expenses are down. And the difference will go into the fund balance to continue to grow.
So it would replace fund balance?
The Parks and Recs salary savings, is it in the fund balance currently?
No.
Has it already been used?
No, if they've got fund balance, and it's being carried as we speak. And we can certainly look to see, not fund, if they've got salary savings, we can look at the amount of their salary savings year-to-date and tell you what that is.
That's why I'm asking it, because I thought you brought us an amount of salary savings at that time. Was it in like two point something million?
And Jelica, can you tell us what the salary savings is projected to be for Parks and Rec, please?
I remember a presentation we had that it was a significant amount.
You probably remember the presentation back when we were getting, addressing the fund balance being below 60 days. And we presented to you the fund, excuse me, the salary savings at that time and how we would get it above 60. You approved it, and we were able to get the fund balance above 60. And maybe what you're remembering.
So you've held that, or have you filled those positions? I'm just trying to figure out where the money is.
Y'all are missing each other, Mr. City Manager. If I can take a crack at it. Counselor Davis is saying that in the police department and in Parks and Rec, and there may be others, there are projected salary savings. What happens under our policy, Counselor Davis, is what you're alluding to, is that at the end of the year, what has not been spent, it's already budgeted, but what has not been spent rolls back in to the general fund, reserve fund. And so to the extent that you have to draw from the reserve fund, let's say $400,000, and then there's just hypothetically speaking, because he threw that figure out, a $2 million salary savings, then you net your general fund $1.6 million. So I think that's what Counselor Davis is looking for, is there's money available that will replenish the.
Well, and let me just say, when there's, when, the mayor just explained it. You know, if we, if you approve using a day of fund balance today, and we go and proceed forward and $500,000 comes out of fund balance, the fund balance will drop by a day. But as we close the year at the end of June, whatever, if the expenses are below the revenue and let's say there's $2 million because there's salary savings and so forth, so on, then that will roll over into fund balance, and then the fund balance would grow by four days.
And I understand that, I understand that. I guess my point is that we took money and we, we put it somewhere. And we took it out of Parks and Recs, I'm just trying to find.
No, it's in their budget. It's in their budget until the year closes.
Okay, so that would lead me to my next question. What is the anticipated, at the end of the year, what is the anticipated amount in the fund balance? We're fixing to go into budget assess, and y'all usually bring us an amount that's anticipated or expected. You should already have that number, what is that?
Well, right now, it's, of course, it's 63 days. We can tell you where the, how we're trending revenue to expenses. And if we continue to trend as we are today, year-to-date, then we would expect expenses to be $1 million less than revenue to exceed expenses by $1 million.
Well, of course, if you've got three days, it'd be 1.2.
Now, well.
63 days, three days would be 1.2 million. Is your budget, so your budget is already, I guess where I'm going with this is I'm trying to understand the amount of money that we're working with, whether we took some from Parks and Recs, okay? And if it's there, maybe we should give that back to them and budget it back.
We have not taken anything, we have not taken anything from Parks and Rec. We don't take money from any department during the course of the fiscal year for salary savings unless.
Let's just say it's being held, okay?
It's held in their budget, it's in their budget.
Yes.
It's in their budget. So if they ran out tomorrow and hired 10 people.
Still there, can they use it?
Well, we'll look at how much is there. Well, we'll look at how much is there. Have you looked at their budget to see how much salary savings they have?
As far as Parks and Recreation, no. But within the budget for FY '18, we have budgeted, as the mayor stated, it's about $250,000 of budgeted salary savings that we have. So we anticipated in FY '18 them to not spend about $250,000 in salary savings, just like we did for the police department. We budgeted 1.9 billion in salary savings. And so we anticipate that they will not spend approximately that amount as far as salary savings are concerned. But we are, as the city manager, excuse me, as the city manager mentioned, we are going through the budget process right now. We will have those projections as far as where we'll close out FY '18. That'll be obviously presented when the budget is recommended to council. And we kind of like to wait until we, until we get as close as we possibly can towards the year to, to really make those projections. I will say, I haven't done a finance update, it continues to be pushed, but the next meeting, I will be presenting February. As of January, though, the general fund is up, I believe, a little bit more than 1% year-to-date as of January 2018 when compared to January 2017. So revenues are up just slightly in the general fund as of January.
So let me, you're now working on the budget, and you're factoring the budget and compiling the budget. So are you utilizing these projections that you're working on and sticking them in the current upcoming budget? And then, once you do that, then you're going to come back and give us a, an amount that's left over in the fund balance?
Yes, we'll come back and give an amount, give a, a projection of days as far as where we feel that we'll end FY '18. That's correct.
Well, I guess my
Initial projections, when we adopted the budget, after all the adjustments that were made during the budget process, we projected that we'll, we would be at 60.29 days as of FY '18. Of course, that was before we finalized FY '17. So we have to account for the monies that we, days that we added to fund balance from FY '17 into the equation. So we'll come back with an updated projection for FY '18 during the budget process.
And that, that just, the, the question I'm struggling with, based on this conversation we just had, is somewhere in there, maybe that money that can be used can be put back into their budget or not held and allow them to be used, therefore you wouldn't have to go into fund balance.
Yeah, I think it's just an accounting thing. I mean, do you see conceptually saying it's, it's not being held by anybody, it's just been budgeted for personnel.
Right.
And so they can't, you know, we would have a problem if any department head took money that was budgeted for personnel and started buying cars with it or whatever. They'd have to come to council and ask for a budget amendment on that. And so that's, so nothing's being held, nothing's being squirreled away or certainly hidden.
Right.
But it's just a matter of there is this potential
Right.
That there will be this extra money, and it will definitely go back to, to the general fund reserve, and it will offset any cash flow needs today
Right.
for repairs to, you know, for capital investment to the pool.
Well, can this count, does this council have the ability to do that? To take those salary savings, designate it on positions, and utilize it for this emergency need?
If, if we, we can calculate the salary savings from Parks and Rec, and let's say it comes to $200,000, excuse, $200,000, and they could make a request to use the $200,000 in salary savings to repair pools, and you could approve it. Yes.
Or, I, I think also, you know, money's fungible. And so it's all, you know, whether it's general fund, reserve, or whether it is salary savings from the police department and Parks and Rec, it's all sitting in one account.
Well
It's just all sitting there. So, so it, you know, we can't tell the bank, give us the 400,000 that is in this. To them, it's just $400,000.
Right.
So it's how we account for it.
Exactly.
And I don't want us to get wrapped up around the axle that somehow this is miraculously different if we say it's, it's salary savings.
And I hear the point that you make, Mayor, whether you take 500,000 out of fund balance today, or, and, and use that for pool repairs, or take 200,000 out of salary savings in Parks and Rec and 200,000 out of police department and say, go and do it, if the money is, if you, if you just take it out of fund balance today and you leave it where it is in salary savings, it's going right back into fund balance after June 30th.
Yeah, it's all the same.
So it's a wash.
I, I think, I think it's just a matter of budgeting. They have a budget, it's just kind of using, utilizing the budget first, and then we can move into the fund balance after that. It's just
Well, my, my recommendation today is that we use fund balance.
If, if you want to do it like that, that's fine. I've just asked the question
Sure.
about the savings that's within their budget. They have a budget.
We can calculate salaries.
And we can max the budget out. And then if you need extra money, you can get it out of the fund balance or somewhere. I guess that was my point.
Sure.
Do that. All right.
Let me just say this, if, if, Madam Mayor, if council want to authorize moving forward with repairing the pools and allow the city manager to look at Parks and Rec budget to see if a portion can come out of their budget through salary savings or otherwise. And if you can't get the 500,000 out of there, then the balance will come out of fund balance. If there's nothing there, then all will come out of fund balance.
Sure.
That allows some flexibility for me to look there first
Right.
before going to fund balance.
Yes.
And I think that would satisfy what you were talking about, Councilor Davis.
All right, we've got Councilor Baker.
Thank you. Well, I just had a question about that. Is that, I mean, finance, we need to look at that and make sure, rather than it roll into the fund balance and come back in
Right.
to start using salary savings on the fly? I don't know if that's, I mean, I understand Councilor Davis' proposal, it makes sense, but I still want to make sure that's in accordance with our policies.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I'm not sure that
Well, typically, to use the salary savings, we would come back to you for approval.
That's right.
And, but if, if that's, if you give me that direction today, then I would consider
I would prefer sticking to policy, but that'll be a council decision, I guess, if they want to do it.
Yeah. But it's all the same money.
It is. You're right.
You're going to have to come back.
You're absolutely right. It's all the same.
It's all the same money.
Doesn't matter which way you go.
Yeah.
My other question was for Parks and Rec, and I guess, and this is for future consideration, I don't want to make anybody mad, but just for future planning, has there any thought about going to more splash pad type facilities and getting away from the traditional in-ground pools?
Well, I, I think
Because they're expensive and their maintenance nightmares, they always have been.
You know, we, let me say this, I think that will be on the table for discussion as Councilor Thomas pointed out, let's look to the future and where we're going. You know, we once had neighborhood swimming pools. They were in all these different neighborhoods where kids could walk in the neighborhood and go swimming, and it spread Parks and Rec's resources very thin. And so then we, we went to that concept of regional pools, and that's why you only have four.
Right.
And so, you know, as time changes and challenges are different, as we come back and talk about replacing these old pools in the next special purpose local option sales tax, we ought to be deciding whether we're going to stick with regional concept or we're going to go back to a neighborhood type pool concept. And therefore, you will have smaller pools and perhaps more manageable when there's a break or they start to age. So I, I think it's something we've got to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
We've got, we'll go with Mayor Pro Tim.
I was just going to make a motion, send any just recommendations.
Well, and, and Madam Mayor, staff is telling me, I hate to interrupt council members, but based on the time that they project they need to repair these pools, it will be an emergency purchase, and we're not, we don't have time to go through a full-blown RFP process where it takes three months to get it back to council to get you to approve us with this vendor. And so it would be more like an emergency purchase
And this is
to get it done. Pools typically open after school is out, late May, early June.
The first Wednesday school's out.
So it needs to be, we need to
You've got a motion second to approve your recommendation. Councilor Wilson, did you want to speak to the motion? Are you good with the second?
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we will, I don't think it's, can it be queued up?
I can't get any comments.
Or do I just need to call? I'll call it. All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
And, and Madam Mayor, I simply say, and we won't, we're not just going to go out and say this is our preference. We're going to, they will still go through a process of looking at vendors and evaluating and selecting it, just that you can't go and package it. And, you know, our process typically take 60, 90 days to get an RFP out. And many times, you know, you, you may ask us, where are we on the RFP? Well, it's working through our tedious process. And so we'll keep you informed on what the process is and, and how we're moving along so that you're involved and know that, that it's a fair process.
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the next, you had some questions last week about Motts Green, and I'm going to have Planning Director Rick Jones to come around. We didn't bring it back for a vote today because we brought it based on a change order at the last meeting that came down from Georgia DOT. And since that time, Georgia DOT has come back with something else, you know? And so I told them, we'll just brief you on how Motts Green came about and where, how we got to where we are today. And then hopefully, we will be clear on what Georgia DOT is looking for by the next meeting, and then we could bring it back to you for a vote. So with that, Planning Director Rick Jones on Motts Green.
Madam Mayor, members of council, let me try to go through this at the same time, not belabor the point here. We want, we want to bring you up to date about where we are with Motts, Motts Green, what we're trying to accomplish out there, and how we got to this point. I want to draw your attention to, first, to the location itself. This really is, is an area of synergy for, for the most part. And I mean that in all sincerity about the fact, about all the activity that's gone on down there. And I had to remind myself a little bit when we started doing this. For instance, we started out with at the 13th to 14th Street Riverwalk section itself. Prior to that, even though I got to thinking about, we did the section between 12th and 13th Street on, on the Riverwalk. We had to put, we put a million dollars toward that project in, in dealing with that area itself. Of course, you know about the 14th Street pedestrian bridge. We spent a little over $5 million of funding for that, to make that a reality. It's becoming the tourist attraction, the, the people attraction for most, for the most part, we all, all predicted it would, would be in terms of making things happen down there as well and involved with all that. Of course, then, you know, we also had, we also did the plaza. We came right behind the bridge itself and added the plaza on that. It was another $2 million we, we added to that, that project itself. There's also the Fall Line Trace. All this, of course, has been done in the last 10 years. You see all the activity that's gone on surrounding this, this entire area. The, the thing I left off there also is the recent extension we did from, from 10th on down to 14th here on the north side of that. That was another $2 million we added into that project as well. The one thing we, I don't show on this, of course, is, is really the 500-pound gorilla in the room here is, is the Whitewater project and the millions of dollars we spent down there involved with all that. Then that brings me to the point about the Rapids itself, which is just a mixed-use commercial development of apartments and some retail, potentially some office use as well. I would dare say that today that that project doesn't come about unless all the investment we have made in this area was done first because of the, of the area itself. And it took, even took them a little while to get to this point, I realize that. But because of the, of the investment we have made in this area, the Rapids and some other things that are coming about are going to start paying some dividends to this community on that. Which brings us to this little green area here, which is Motts Green, involved with all that area. This is the, gives some kind of reference point here. Behind the, the tag for the 14th Street pedestrian bridge, of course, is Total System area, which was a, was a multimillion-dollar investment we made 20 years plus now in, in terms of dealing with that area. And here's Motts Green here that's, we're asking for another million dollars in terms of taking care of this little small area itself. And I'm going to show you some things here. In fact, let me just go into it now and show you. This is what, what Motts Green looks like today. This is the, one of the monuments down there. You can see, it's kind of hard, there's a shadow on this picture, but you can see at the very top, the, the aging, the wearing that's, that's happened on, on this monument itself. We're not saying go down there and take it down and rebuild it, but we are saying it needs to be cleaned. A lot of this stuff needs to be, it needs to be cleaned for the most part in terms of, of taking care of the area itself. We've got planners down there that don't have any planning zone. I mean, that's just, just straightforward in terms of dealing with this. This, you look at this picture, first, first blush, and you'll say, we didn't know anybody was buried down there. It's not. This is actually a, a map, a, a reference point for the entire area itself. You can see how weathered it is. You can't read it any longer. And we're asking folks to go down there now, folks who visit our community, for, for Whitewater or other events, and we're trying to, to direct them around in this area, which this map could help, but they can't use it. It's not, it's just not utilizable anymore involved with that area. We've got some, some walls that are starting to show some cracking, some settling here that needs, need to be addressed, long-range from, from that standpoint. Also, again, you see here's some, some additional walls as well. They're just showing their age now, and they need to be gone back and have some work done, again, to make their overall appearance and allow safety as well improved here from that standpoint. This gives you some idea also what the, the grounds look like in the area itself. There's not a whole lot of, not a whole lot of greenery down there, even in the middle of the summer. Involved with that, and again, here's another shot of one, one of the monuments down there. Again, you get an idea about what the overall appearance is. This is not putting our best, our best foot forward in the community. This is, this is in some ways really is, is the, the, the back door to our community, to the Riverwalk itself. It is one of the, one of the remaining green spaces we have. There's a lot of history, history that goes on in this area itself that we need to be talking about and showing to the community, but you really can't do it in this condition. We started off with this idea of the project itself probably back about 2015. I think that time Deputy City Manager Arrington was here, and he was promoting that idea. I know since that time, we've had conversations, numerous conversations with Total System because of the activities they've got going on. You may recall about a year or so ago now, they were trying to renovate the old Mott House and make it into a convention center. They were about 90% complete with that when the fire came about, took the building out completely. They have since though stepped up as well and gone back and at least preserved the, the memory of, of that area if nothing else, made it a quality site. But it's hard to do that when they, when we have an area that looks like it doesn't right now for, in Motts Green itself, involved with all that. We've also had, I think, I can show you here on this slide, not only support from Total System for this, of course, but we also have had our own GDOT board member, Sam Welburn, who's been a big proponent of this project in making sure that it goes through and stays on task here. I get at least a call at least once a month now, almost on a clockwork basis, that Mr. Welburn's asking me about where are we with this project and if it's still moving forward, and how can we make this project happen? We worked very close with him and with, with representatives from GDOT itself on that, from that. And if you see on this slide also, this, of course, is the last area, really area that needs some, some work now. There are other areas, I understand, along the Riverwalk. But this is a key point now that really has not seen any improvements or enhancements since the Riverwalk was, was constructed back in, in the early 1990s. Back in March of 2015, we presented the project, and I'll show you the map again in just a second, the, the overall aerial that we presented to council that, that time about the project itself and brought, hopefully brought to your attention. itself and brought, hopefully brought to your attention. It was brought also as part of the Fourteenth Street Plaza. And you may recall also, at the time, we were dealing with the issue about reopening Front Avenue. And so all that came about at that same time. In August of 2016, we presented, staff presented a resolution for funding in terms of project we were going to do with discretionary funds and things of that nature. You'll see the one on the slide highlighted as Motts Green for a million dollars. That was done back in 2016 under Resolution 283-16. In December of sixteen, we brought a resolution to you to enter into an agreement with GDOT for this project. It has a eight hundred thousand dollar federal money attached to it. We're required under any of these agreements to have a twenty percent match, in our case would be two hundred thousand for this, in dealing with that match back in 2016. I'll say this, and I'll probably say it again. Anytime we deal with federal dollars, and this is the federal project now, you need to understand that. Anytime we deal with federal dollars, we have to play by their rules. Their requirements are much more stringent than we would deal with with the state, and much more stringent, far more stringent, I should say, than what we deal with on the local level. We know that going in, but I'm just telling you, that's what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis that. In early 2017, we, the request for proposal is issued, and on March twenty-third of last year, the design was awarded to Heck Burshaw. Heck Burshaw is on our, on our listing of engineers and architects we already gone through, but again, because we're dealing with federal dollars here, we could not utilize that list. We actually had to go back out, do an RFP process. We had three firms, qualified firms that came to us. We went through those, that process. We evaluated them, we scored them, and we found out that Heck Burshaw was the one that we thought should go forward with the project. And at that time, that's when we brought to you back in May of last year for your approval at that time. This is the map I referred to you earlier about. I'm going to try to show you on the screen, of course. Again, this, this area here that we're looking at is primarily this area right here with that. This, of course, you see where Fourteenth Street Bridge, Fourteenth Street Bridge is itself. There's also the plaza, which is now, since this time, has been gone and it's been constructed and put into play here and that. We've also opened Front Avenue. The piece now that's missing out of this puzzle is the, is going back and taking care of Motts Green that we talked about back in 2015 from that standpoint. What we want to try to show you with that. What we want to try to show you with that, of course, is you see on this, on this drawing here, this aerial where the Mott House Memorial is here, pointing this out to you, that's the Motts, that's the Motts area itself. They've since done that, of course. This area just to the right of that is a Total System Campus on that. There is a proposal in here. We've got a little more detail about this as well with the Horace King Bridge replica. I alluded to that last, last time we had this conversation in terms of, in terms of really just dressing up the entire area itself. This is the project description. This is what we told GDOT we were going to do with the project and with the money they were providing us, which basically is renovate and refurbish the last section of the Riverwalk at this point. The two large brick monuments will be cleaned and repaired. Primary, this can be pressure washed to keep, to get the grime off of it, the years of weathering and so forth out there. The existing monument lighting will be replaced with efficient LED lighting on that. We have some landscaping that will either be refurbished or replaced down there. The damaged planters I showed you will be repaired. There will be, handrails will be replaced. Settle brick and concrete areas will be removed, repaired, and replaced. And of course, the signage will be replaced also as well. This is a key factor, I think, though, that we're trying to make this area even more special than it really is today. We already talked about the history of it. One of the historical factors, though, that a lot of folks just don't realize is the history of bridge building in this community, particularly by Horace King. Horace King, of course, built the bridge, built a covered bridge at one time across Chattahoochee, right there at Fourteenth Street, and it's long gone. The idea, though, is not to replicate that bridge and build another bridge across the river. What we are trying to do, though, is make it a special place where folks can enjoy the river, enjoy that area. And by doing that, we're proposing a replica of the historic Lattice Bridge that was actually built. I'll show you a picture of that as well in just a second. It would actually lead out, leave from the plaza and extend out into the river. I've got this thing in quotes for you to understand. This is not a bridge in the sense that you're going to walk across from point A to point B. It is merely an observation deck. It is a bridge, it's a replica of the bridge that Mr. King built at one time in this area, but it's just that. But it will be an observation deck that will allow folks to actually leave the plaza and walk out and look out over the river going both directions, particularly dealing with when we have whitewater activities going on or other events for that. It is for pedestrians only, no cars. Not big enough for that one thing, but the other thing is it's designed only for pedestrians to be used. And of course, we talked about historical interpretive element, much like Mr. King built back in the eighteen hundreds. This gives you some idea about this. Of course, this backside here, this back, of course, back this way is the Chattahoochee itself. This is the replica of the bridge we're talking about constructing at this point. You would actually walk out from the plaza onto the, onto the bridge, and that looked, like I said, as an observation deck looking both directions from that standpoint. These other elements here, of course, would be, would be cleaned and reworked. This gives you more of a, a ground level view of what you would see with that bridge itself involved with that. These, these monuments of this type, these, I'm not sure what else I want to call them right now, but they would be also be reworked because, again, the history of the mill, the old Muskogee Mill that sat down there, is one key element of this history we're talking about that we need to preserve and make sure everybody understands there was, there was a mill here, and there were folks that worked and lived and died in some cases dealing with these mills and whatnot. But the mill, the mill itself would be monumental in terms of preserving that history as well. And then here's another view of that, looking at from the Fourteenth Street Bridge itself, looking at at the, where the bridge would be located in reference to the plaza and to other elements out there. It's just another attraction we think that folks will utilize and come to the river and realize that there's something more down here than just Whitewater. There's a historical element we're trying to, trying to capture and relate to the rest of the community as well. This is a picture of, this is not the bridge itself, and don't, so don't get, don't get excited with it. This is the bridge, this is a replica of the bridge, though, that a company out of Vermont would build. Something along those lines here. We'd have to design that bridge and make that determination. But that would give you an idea of the rustic look of the bridge itself, just again, to kind of capture that element of what happened in this particular area of the community itself. This brings us to where we are in terms of talking about the need here. Environmental and archaeological studies are a key component of any federal project. We're not, we're not denying that. But as I showed you also, all this synergy we got going on down here with Total Systems with the Riverwalk at Thirteenth and Fourteenth, Fourteenth Street, the city mills, Twelfth and Thirteenth on here as well. You've got the pedestrian bridge, you've got the plaza, you've got Whitewater, of course. All of these projects required some influx or some coordination with some federal agency somewhere along the line. In most cases, in all cases, probably, that would have been anybody dealing with historical elements, anything dealing with environmental, anything dealing with ecological, fish and wildlife would get involved with the Whitewater. And I can go on and start naming a lot more, but that's not necessary, I don't think. But you get the understanding that anytime we deal with federal dollars, we're dealing with their rules and their regulations, and it requires at this time, certain studies be done. However, and we relayed this conversation to them at the very beginning, however, you can see on this list here, we've got at least six, seven studies that have already been done down there in this area. Because of that fact, we said, surely, surely, we don't have to go back and reinvent this wheel again when it's time, when it's time to do the environmental stuff and so forth. We can, we can either provide you a basically a capsule or something, or a summary, or Cliff Notes, whatever you want to call the things, and say this is what, this is what really needs to be done. Surely, we don't have to go back and do that. That was not the answer we got, not the answer we liked. I'll tell you that in a heartbeat right now. We were told because the study was more than a year old, they had to be redone. And we didn't like that, still don't like that. Still not happy with that answer. But I'm telling you what we're up against on that, in that regard. Understanding again, that nothing really has changed down there since the last time we did the study. Nothing has really changed on Motts Green since we did the last study, since we did the study even for Total System, because at least if nothing else, we have encapsulated or at least maintained what's down there. We, we have, and this is no exaggeration, we have volumes and volumes and volumes of archaeological, historical records and data that was done when we did for Total System. And nothing has changed from that. The archaeologist who did, did the work in, we told the system and did the work with us at that time is the same archaeologist we're looking at utilizing in this case. And he's kind of scratching his head, too. But I'm telling you, this is unfortunately what we're, what we're up against and what we have to deal with in that. Both of these studies, both the archaeological and the environmental, ecological stuff, has to be done for us to go forward. That's not saying, though, that we're going down without a fight. And I don't mean that word fright literally here. I'm just saying that we still are going to have conversations with GDOT and with others about this project, about making sure that this thing doesn't, doesn't, doesn't develop a life of its own. And that's, that's a real issue in that. In summary here, council has approved the concept and funding for the rehabilitation of Motts Green. Motts Green needs immediate attention. This is, again, that last piece of the puzzle that we need to address. GDOT's not going to accept our previous work on this area as far as the archaeological and environmental, which they would. And again, like I said, we're going to continue that, that conversation anyway. But in order for us to go forward, we've got to put this, this project into play and turn these consultants loose on that. The consultants will work under, under the guidance of Heck Burshaw. Without us, that just makes, makes sense in terms of that. And then the funding itself has really been identified under T-Splotch Project, under the T-Splotch Project Fund, so the funding is available for that. I don't take any great pleasure. I really don't, in terms of having to come here and ask you for this. It's more of a last resort, resort really, more than anything else. But understand also the importance of what we're trying to achieve here with this project and how this is what it's going to take for us to get there. So if all goes well here, we would like to bring this back to you, the next council meeting for you to vote on it, and so we can go ahead and start hopefully making some action take place here.
So, Madam Mayor, if there are questions, we'll answer those, but a lot, we've invested a lot into making Uptown, the Riverwalk, Whitewater, the pedestrian bridge, the restroom, now Motts Green. We've, we've put a lot into the Uptown area. I mean, we took, we used CDBG dollars and fifty million dollars to acquire fifty acres, and we relocated every business on that fifty acres with CDBG dollars to start this process. And so that's how we got TSIS. We did it in a public-private partnership with them. You remember Riverside Buick and all this stuff down there? We acquired all of that and moved them and helped them stay in business. So this is, people ask us every, I mean, they ask us on a regular basis, how'd you do it? It's public-private partnerships. And, you know, we've done a great work. And so this is just, we're trying to bring the final pieces together. The ten million we did at T-Splotch, city mills, up at Beal, and then city mills, and then this. You know, I think we're bringing it, bringing it all to closure. And then it's about telling our story, it's about quality of life, it's about attracting visitors. I mean, that's what we're doing, one piece out of ten. And we're just about there. So that's what this is all about. And it's federal money with local match, and we've got the funding. And this is, from my standpoint, this is, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna make all of this better. So we hope that we'll have your support, but we'll answer questions at this time about Motts Green.
Okay. We've got Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Jones, would you go back to one of those maps that shows Motts Green? That one. Do we own all that property?
Yes, ma'am. To my knowledge, we do.
Where the, where the Mott House Memorial is and everything?
No, ma'am. I want to draw basically a general outline for you for this. This is the area we're talking about, and I'm going to include the little bridge. That's pretty much it. It's really everything to the west of the, of the Riverwalk itself, that area down there.
And we own all of that that you've outlined?
That's my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And TSIS then owns the property adjacent?
Yes. In fact, if you go down there today, if I remember correctly about it, where the columns were on the front porch of that house, actually, it's on, it's on city property. The rest of it is back on Total System. That's why that fence is, is built like that. They kind of devised it and so forth, but get an understanding about where their property really lies and so forth in terms of this. I know that when, there was, there was a lot of concern on TSIS's part when they dedicated that, the Mott House site, if they got through with it, because they were, they were bringing in dignitaries and so forth from wherever. But they were really concerned about the overall appearance of Motts, the Motts Green area itself. In fact, they were looking for, we were looking for an irrigation system, but we couldn't provide them, because they were willing to come out there and put, put fresh sawed out at their cost just to help spruce it up a little bit. But we had, have an irrigation system that we really would support it, because for whatever reason, the boxes have been pulled or whatever over years, so.
Well, I guess, too, one of my questions is, while we own part of that and TSIS owns part of that, it really is difficult sometimes to tell where our property ends and their property begins. What kind of cooperation, if you will, are mixing are we doing down there with, with, to make sure that, that our property and their property is?
We're, we're going to make sure the surveys are in place there to make sure that we dignify or, excuse me, distinguish between which, which is our property, which is theirs. Yeah, let me.
And but once it's all done, it's going to be, it's going to look like one property, right?
Yes, ma'am, it will. But I failed to say this, too, because I confirmed this again with Total Systems yesterday about this, this site. They're willing to help us maintain this site. They realize this is also going to benefit them just as much as it is us in terms of, in long range, in terms of whatever goes on down there.
And you did say it here in the presentation.
I just failed to mention.
And sometimes we get those offers because they assume that they will make it look better than we can afford to make it look. So sometimes we get those offers.
So let's let them try. I'm sorry. No. But I just want to, this is a valuable, as you're saying, commodity for us, and I want us to, I want it to be as seamless as possible, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Well, and I say that, you know, I know it was facetious, but, 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 you know, they don't, typically when we do stuff like that, they don't want to see prison labor down there, mowing and maintaining. So they, you know, we'll, we'll get offers like that.
We've got Counselor Davis.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, look, I, I have a lot of concerns, and that's just me, okay?
Sure.
But I think this is, goes beyond me. I think it goes beyond this council. I think it goes beyond the city administration. I think it goes beyond the city administration. I think it goes beyond the architect. You know, let me back up a little bit here in saying that when, you know, I wouldn't even known of this concept unless I missed a council meeting where it was presented like this, which I don't think I remember a meeting where the bridge aspect was presented. I do remember the rehabilitation and the renovation aspect of Motts Green. I do remember that. Matter of fact, I think we all agree that, yeah, that needs to be cleaned up. Even the citizens agree that it needs to be cleaned up. And especially with the pedestrian bridge that was there, this all goes back to the pedestrian bridge and putting a little roundabout and all that there. And I think the question was asked, guys, we've still got an issue over here. We've got all this brand-new stuff, but yet here's Motts Green sitting over here falling apart. You know, we need to do something. We need to clean it up. So when it was brought to us, it was brought to us. Matter of fact, you know, in your documentation here, it says it was brought to us as Motts Green renovation. And then the ordinance later is a rehabilitation, and then the architect was signed on. I'm assuming after the architect was signed on that these drawings were commenced and they came about. So this is the first time I've seen them. First time I've seen drawings. So, you know, regardless of $100,000, I mean, $100,000 to do studies and what I see there, you know, it just, I'm having a hard time wrapping that around. But like I said, it's not for me to figure out. I think my concern is, my main concern, this is taxpayers' dollars. It's the citizens of Columbus. It's theirs. They own it. It's their project. All these things about it, it's theirs. I think the least we can do, and we've always done this, this is not just rehabilitation or renovation, it's construction. It's construction of a new attraction, as you stated. So I would like to see, I can't approve this without it going to the public and getting public input. Now, I will tell you, since this has come out and I started asking around if anybody knew about it, I haven't found one person outside the people in this room right here that really knows about this. I've asked the former director of Uptown. I've asked Uptown. I've asked WC Bradley. I've asked Total Systems. I've asked, I've asked them all. And I don't think anybody really knows about this. And they haven't seen it. So I guess in saying that, I mean, and then I'm not saying that in a ill-mannered way or a confrontational way. I guess I'm just trying to make my point that I think it needs to go out to the citizens and let them tell us what they want. If they like this and they want it, I'm fine with it. But, you know, you see my problem? I mean, this is not something that Glenn Davis is going to approve for the citizens when it's really theirs. I'd like for them to have a chance to give us some input and tell us that's what we like, that's what we want. It may be, they may come back with something totally different, I don't know. But I think we've always done it like that. As far as I've been on this council, we've always done it like that. I don't see why we wouldn't do it any different. So I would hope that we would afford some input into this like we have on all the other projects along the Riverwalk. That's my comments. Okay? Any other questions, Mayor?
Yeah, we've got Counselor Woodson. The project's already been approved, I think, twice, but now we need, it's just this amendment for the...
Archaeological studies, that's what this is about.
Yes, and the project's been approved.
Wait a minute. Now, I don't, I disagree with you, Mayor. The project, we didn't approve, how do we approve something we didn't never even see?
Well, you've got the resolutions in here, and we've been briefed on this before.
Well, I know that's the way this administration works, is they put it back and say, "You guys made..."
No, sir, you say that over and over again.
And I'll keep saying it over and over again.
And we pull...
That's what you like to do, is put it back in our face that you made the decision.
No.
I'm trying to tell you, I just told you, we didn't make the decision on the new construction of the attraction.
What?
You made, you approved two resolutions.
There have been presentations at council on numerous occasions about this. I don't know about the precise, this precise, yes, it's been, you had at least two resolutions that you approved, and there were presentations. And we do this all the time. There is a constant suggestion that somehow you're being duped or things are being hidden from you. We go back and we pull the tapes. And then when we do, everybody gets mad that we've insulted them because we've proven that in fact we've shown over and over again. So if you want us to pull the tapes again and come back and show the prior presentations, we're happy to do that. Or if there's other PowerPoints or whatever we've done, we're happy to do that. But you can't just make accusations that you're being lied to, that you're being deceived, and so on and so forth, when there's two resolutions that show you voting affirmatively in favor of this. So, I mean, I'm sorry, I would not have said that if you had not suggested that we pulled the wool over your eyes. Now, what you can do is vote no, and perhaps other councilors will join you in voting no to approve the environmental study, which I'm sure will cause DOT to pull their $800,000 grant and deny the community of this amenity, which is something council has the authority to do. But I can tell you, too, and I know not every counselor comes to every event, but, and I certainly didn't push this particular project, I think it's been going on prior to my even being mayor, but I can tell you, I've been invited, as the mayor, to at least two events at Motts Green where there are all kinds of stakeholders. I mean, 50 people, 60 people, other city councilors, certainly people from, you know, generally in the community, uptown leaders, things of that nature, where we've cut ribbons and announced things and had up boards of what's going to go on there. So, you know, I don't know who you were talking to when you were taking your poll about nobody knowing anything about this, but those 50 or 60 people that was covered by the Ledger Inquirer and covered by the TV media that day on those two separate occasions, those people certainly knew this was going on. So, you know, I don't know how we can sit here and say, "This is a surprise we knew nothing about," when we have the resolutions as evidence, we have the public events as evidence, and we have the presentations to this council in the past. So if it's not something council wants to do anymore, then I would suggest you vote no on the environmental study, and we lose the grant. We lose the $800,000 grant. We could do that.
And, Madam Mayor, I don't mind asking Uptown, when we bring it back for a vote the next Tuesday, I can ask them for a letter of support, the Uptown Board of Directors. I can ask TSIS for a letter of support. I don't mind just asking for support.
Well, I, you know, I'll just tell you, when Rick put up, I've texted Sam Welburn, and I'm going to share this with you, because I wondered who had been behind this. How did this ever get started? Because like I said, it started before I was mayor, so, you know, who's been pushing this? It wasn't my bright idea. And of course, he's upset because he's been working for 10 years and, you know, has gotten all this, and can't believe that after all the work that we've put in with our public-private partners, that now at this late date, this is going to be pulled. So I'm telling him, we're, you know, trying to work it out. But clearly, there are people who are very interested in this, have been pushing it along the way. So...
That's the feedback I can get.
Uptown, TSIS was at that, the last one, as I was talking about. All of those partners were there, and TSIS had private money. So we can pull the plug, that's easy to do. But I just think you need to know, a lot of people have been involved in this for a long, long time. Counselor Davis.
Mayor, with all due respect, I think some of your comments are very misleading.
Really? Be specific. Be specific.
Specifically speaking, if you did not listen, I said I have concerns, but it really doesn't matter if I have concerns. Have you had any public hearings?
I don't know about, have we had public hearings about this? Other than, of course, the city council meetings are public hearings. So the public hearings at the city council.
Was this bridge shown us, when all this approvals that you're talking about, was the bridge aspect of the attraction, was that shown to us that we were going to be spending this money on that?
What did the prior, what did the prior PowerPoints look like?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the drawing you have before you was what was shown back in 2015. Because we went through this whole process, and we identified, again, the bridge was under construction at that point, I remember at that point, or completed. We were talking about 14th Street Plaza and about what we were going to do with it. We were talking about Front Avenue, about reopening up. And we also showed what we needed to do in terms of dealing with Motts Green. That was done back in 2015. That was part of the presentation at that time. What do you think spectacular far as presentation, but it was a PowerPoint presentation we presented to you at that time. And I know we've had some conversations with others, if not with every member on council, about the need for this area and about what we're going to try to do with the bridge area itself in terms of that.
So it was presented at council, it ran twice a day for seven days?
Yes, ma'am.
On CCGTV? And the press was present?
Mayor, all I'm asking is that if you take it out to the public and present it to the public and let them see what is about to transpire down there if it's approved. The $107,000 is because this attraction is being added. That's where the money's going. It probably wouldn't have been a question if that amount of money didn't come back to this council to try to figure out what it was going to be used for. At that point, it was told to us that there was going to be an extension out into the river. Okay? That's okay, but the concept to me has changed. It's changed. All right? I'm not saying that anybody lied to me or duped me or anything like that. I think I made that very clear. I said I had concerns. I never accused anybody of anything like that. I'm just, my point is, as a council representative, I would like it to go to the public and have some hearings and let's get some feedback on it. I mean, I do have some concerns. You may not, others may not. It may turn out to be a great thing, but I would like the public to have the opportunity to see it and comment on it.
Well, why don't we consider this the public's opportunity to see it? For the next seven days, this is going to run twice a day. Once at 9:00 in the morning, once at 7:00 PM in the morning. If you have concerns, call your councilors, call the city manager, contact me, and let us know what your thoughts are. It's run before, we haven't, did anybody get any complaints about this? You know, I mean, I just, I'm trying to move it along. We have these opportunities in our community. This has clearly taken 10 years, you know, why we need to go out and have more meetings, you know, when we're having a meeting right now.
Well, and I want to be clear, Mayor, the $107,000, the only reason we're standing before this council is because of the archaeological studies. That's what the $107,000 is about. It's not about the project, it's about the study that Georgia DOT has mandated that we don't agree with. And so we had to come back to get the money approved. And again, as you said, and has been confirmed by deputy city managers, the bridge was in the 2015 drawings. So, you know, it's been there for a while. And, but this is about the $107,000 and the archaeological drawings, and that's all.
Can we take, make a attempt to have it counted towards our match?
Have what now?
Have the $107 million, I was, $107,000 added to our match. I mean, that would constitute our match.
And she's saying it is part of our match. But we, it's, we got to get it approved by...
Okay, so let me just make this clear, so that we all see what we're talking about here. Regardless of what it was spent on, in order to get the $800,000, we were going to have to pay $200,000.
Right.
Okay. And all we're saying is that part of the $200,000 we have already agreed to pay to get the $800,000 will be the 700, and this $107,000. I want to get that confirmed, let's...
She's verifying that.
Okay. Because if that's, what are we even talking about? We've already agreed to pay, council's already voted to pay $200,000. If all we're sitting here talking about is that part of that $200,000 is going to be spent on an archaeology study, I mean, we just have to decide if we want to give up the grant at this point.
Yes.
You know? So let's get a confirmation on that.
Mayor, I think the, everybody agrees with the renovation and rehabilitation of Motts Green. The addition of the attraction is something totally different. Let me, and you know how it works up here. I know you want to push this thing through, that's fine, but I do think, here's what's going to happen. Let me tell you how it's going to play out. So we're going to say yes, and then when this starts being constructed and it's there, then people are going to come start saying, "Why in the world is that there when you've got a pedestrian bridge right next to it? Why do you go under there? It's a safety issue. It's a maintenance issue." You've got all these concerns that are going to stop popping up, and then they're going to say, "Why in the world?" That council made the decision to do that, I can't do, I cannot believe that. That's how it plays out. And, you know, and the finger's going to get pointed right back at this body. All right? So all I'm saying is, I would like the citizens a chance to see what exactly is going to go there and be part of the participation. Is that too much to ask?
Yeah.
That's not saying get rid of the grant or anything, you know? I'd have a hard time believing that they would just get rid of the grant, but just because of this attraction issue.
Well, but I just want to say...
Or they would eliminate it.
I just want to clear that, you said the bridge would be a safety issue?
Well, I'm looking at, I mean, what I see here, I guess you can make that case.
Well, I mean, we, if we have someone to go and construct it...
I mean, have you been down in that area?
It's going to have to pass all inspections. And certainly, we wouldn't construct a bridge and allow citizens to go out on it, and it's not safe.
That's not what I'm saying, Mr. City Manager. I'm just saying, the comments would be towards public safety.
Okay, public safety, okay.
I'm sure it's going to be, you know, with the amount of money, I'm sure it's going to be engineered appropriately.
Yeah. So, I mean, the bridge is in there, and it's been in there all along, but if we were to take the bridge out, Mayor, the $107,000 would still be on the table.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think y'all are just missing the whole point of what I'm saying. Just take it to the citizens and get, let them have an opportunity to see it and share and participate. Okay? It doesn't really matter what I think at this point. All right? It'd be real easy for me to hit this red button right here today. It really would.
It's not a vote today.
But I'm just asking you, I'm just asking you to go out there and share it with the citizens and see what kind of feedback. Because, you know, at the end of the day, it may be great, but it may be everybody points a finger back at this body for making the decisions that y'all are bringing up.
Madam Mayor, I will, I mean, I can have, we can advertise this in the paper.
Yeah, why don't we just, we could put it on social media or something and ask people for feedback and...
That's not what I'm saying. I don't think that's even going to, you can do that all day.
I mean, we could put the drawing in the newspaper, I'm saying.
We could put it on the CCGTV. I don't, you know, yeah.
We're buying ads, you know?
Yeah. And then citizens can call, they can watch tonight. I bet you Alva's going to do a story on it, so...
I think, like all the other meetings, you can have a community meeting. You could do it like you've done things down at the loft, you could do it in strategic places, you could do it in this place, but you can ask people to come to it and participate. It's done all the time. You've got the, you've got the addresses, email addresses of everybody in that area. You've got Uptown. Uptown could organize it for you. Uptown doesn't know about this.
They do, too, know about this.
Mayor, I've already had the conversations, I mean, if they're, I've already had those conversations, okay? And if they're lying to me...
Somebody in Uptown told you they didn't know about this.
They must have told you something different than they're telling me.
You need to say some names.
Well, Ross Horner does not know anything about this.
Well, I don't think you specifically told him what it was. I mean, there's just no way that Uptown doesn't know about this.
Go talk to them.
Okay, we will. Go talk to Ross. All right. So we're bringing it back for a vote next?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay? All right. Thank you all.
Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the clerk's agenda.
Madam Mayor and members of council, on the clerk's agenda, have a few items of information. Have some biographical sketches for board, biographical sketch of Ms. Verona Campbell. The housing, I'm sorry, the hospital authority has submitted a recommendation, Ms. Verona Campbell. We have two seats vacant on that board, James Webster and Edward Gaffney. However, we need two additional nominees for each of these two seats. Biographical sketch of Mr. John Jackson, who is interested in serving on our circle commission. Biographical sketch of Mr. Kenneth Lor, a recommendation from the Keep Kalama's Beautiful Commission for the vacant seat of Ms. Sandra Okamoto. Have biographical sketch of Mr. Ed Sears, Counselor Davis's nominee for the Crime Prevention Board. Also a biographical sketch for... Also a biographical sketch for Mr. Timothy Weeks. This is Counselor Allen's nominee for the Crime Prevention Board. I was trying to see if we had enough present for this next item, and it is an honorary designation that has been submitted by the Wynton Hill Baptist Church. They are requesting an honorary designation for Reverend Robert Evans Sr. on Buena Vista Road at its intersection with Church Avenue and Lawyer's Lane, as well as the intersection of Bowens Street and Lawyer's Lane.
Got Counselor Huff.
To the clerk, Tony Washington, and this group here, the Reverend Michael Sherman of Wynton Hill Baptist Church wanted to be on record. He's tutoring over at MLK this morning and couldn't make the meeting, and he wanted to be on record that the church and everybody in that area is supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. If it's the council desire, we'll need a motion to forward it to the Board of Honor.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Then I have minutes of our Airport Commission, a Board of Tax Assessors, Hospital Authority, Housing Authority, and Retirees Health.
Great. We've got a motion in second that the minutes be accepted. All those in favor, please state aye.
Then on our Board Appointments, on our Building Authority, we still need a recommendation for Mr. Kel Jackson.
Did you get the add-on for Counselor Allen? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. There is an add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Allen.
We've got a motion in second to adopt. All those in favor, please state aye.
Then on our Board Appointments, as I stated, Building Authority, we still need someone for that seat of Mr. Kel Jackson. On our Civic Center Advisory Board, Mr. Jay Lewis has resigned from the District 10 seat. As you know, this was Counselor Henderson's district, but we can receive recommendations from the floor of the council. Then on ours, the Columbus Hockey Association, we are still waiting to hear back from Mr. Chris Miller as to whether or not he wants to serve on our Circle Commission. We still need someone for Ms. Sidquit's seat. As I indicated there, Mr. John Jackson is interested if someone wants to nominate him. Well, actually, we'll nominate Mr. Jackson for Mr. Danny Archanceiba's seat. We're still waiting to hear back from Ms. Sidquit. And then on our Community Development Advisory, we've outlined the district seat. Counselor Woodson is nominating Pastor Kay Pendleton for her District 7 seat. Have a motion for confirmation.
Got a motion in second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
And then we need someone for the District 10 seat. On our Comprehensive Plan Stakeholders Committee, Counselor Baker is working on a recommendation for his district, and then we'll need someone for Council 10, Council District 10. Cooperative Extension Advisory, Mr. Robert Benson has resigned. We'll need a recommendation for that board. As I indicated, on the Crime Prevention Board, Counselor Allen is nominating Mr. Timothy Weeks, and Counselor Davis is nominating Mr. Ed Sears. We'll bring this back in two weeks for council to take a vote. On our Development Authority, Mr. Alfred Blackmore, as well as Ms. Jackie Lowe, has been renominated. They can be confirmed.
Got a motion. Is there a second? There's a second for confirmation, Counselor Huff. All those in favor, please state aye.
And on our Hospital Authority, as I indicated, we have two vacant seats, Mr. Webster and Mr. Gaffney have both resigned. We have one recommendation of Ms. Verona Campbell. We'll still need two additional recommendations, and then we can send it to the authority for their selection. The Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission is recommending Mr. Kenneth Lor if someone wants to nominate him for the at-large seat of Ms. Send. Well, this.
Can we, can we do it now, or do we have to bring it back?
Well, we'll bring it back in two weeks. Then we'll still need someone for the District 2 seat of Ms. Brenda Poloski. Liberty District Advisory Committee, we still need recommendations for Districts 2, 4, 5, 7, and 10 at large. On the Retirees Health Committee, Mr. Billy Watson is not eligible to succeed himself. Mr. Tom Baron is interested in serving on this committee. Okay, and then Mr. Jack Kinsman, he, also, Mr. Massey, and Ms. Janice Beebe has resigned. We have a recommendation, well, Ms. Esther Ratcliffe is interested, okay? And then Ms. Rhonda Davis. Actually, this is the mayor's appointment, but she is eligible and wants to serve again.
Who's that, Rhonda Davis you said's the mayor's appointment?
It is.
It says council appointment.
I understand it says council, but that is an error. I believe that is your appointment.
Okay, wait a minute, let me just make sure I understand. I'm sorry, since it said council. So this, this is retirees' health benefit. I just didn't know about Tony. Hold on a minute. And so Ms. Davis is interested in serving, and she is eligible.
Let me double-check that, ma'am. We'll bring it back at our next meeting.
Okay, well, she's interested in serving and eligible. I'm fine with renominating her.
And then on our tree board, Dr. Roger Brown, his seat is vacant, as well as Ms. Cassie Renfro has resigned. We'll need a replacement for these two seats, and that's all I have.
Okay, we've got Counselor Huff.
For that Civic Center seat, I'd like to nominate Latasha Lee.
For which seat?
Civic Center Advisory Board.
That's, okay.
You said it was open to the council?
Right, we can receive nominations.
Yeah, Latasha, L.A.T.A.S.H.A., Lee.
Leaks?
Lee.
A Lee, L.E.Y., okay.
All right. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye. All right, we're adjourned. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you all.